You know, I haven't seen what this go ahead, Ed.
Yeah, I wasn't even getting.
Yeah.
You know, I haven't seen what this go ahead, Ed.
Yeah, I wasn't even getting.
Yeah.
I guess right after. What is packaging with Commissioner Johnson?
You let.
It would make sense that.
Nine o'clock, begin the board meeting with flight pledge.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Beth, would you call the roll?
Commissioner Shlongen. Commissioner Shlongen.
Yeah, she's not up there.
Commissioner Johnson.
Here.
Commissioner Pop.
Here.
Commissioner Kapinski.
Here.
Commissioner Heinem.
Here.
Approve or amend the agenda.
Uh, Mr. Chair, I see an item that was submitted by Nadine, our auditor treasurer, on DMV, although we do already have on your agenda at 10:10 a DMV item as requested by Commissioner Johnson. So I suppose maybe we could just kind of package those two together and add Nadine's item, but I think it's obviously it's all one subject. Uh, so anyway, I'm sure, I believe Nadine is prepared to discuss this issue today.
Okay.
So just kind of package those together. Other than that, we didn't have anything else, though.
I'll move approval.
With.
With that, with the added, well, the noted change.
Thank you.
With adding DM, with adding DMV to 1010.
Correct.
Whenever.
I'll second it.
Okay, most men say second, approved or made in second it to add DMV to Commissioner Concerns. Looking for approval or of the agenda. Or no, call the roll.
There you go.
Yeah, call the roll. All in favor?
We gotta call it, I think.
Oh, yeah.
It wouldn't be necessary to do a roll call.
Okay.
On the, on the consent agenda?
She's not online.
Or to approve the amended, or the amended agenda, we do.
Apparently she's not online, so we.
Oh, so we don't need to do roll.
Yeah, it's that Commissioner Shlongen is not joining us virtually, then it wouldn't, it's just not necessary to do a roll call vote.
Okay, so all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Carry. Open forum, is anybody back there? Okay, thank you. So we got a couple people on open forum, open forum, you can come to the podium, state your name and your address, and we'd like to limit it to two to five minutes if we can. Jerome Nelson. Yep, go ahead. You can remove the mask if you're comfortable.
Uh, I want to know why you're, why you're picking on us down by Little Rock Lake. And because we're getting surveyed, we don't have any knowledge of, of picking a surveyor. We, we have to take what you guys give us. And why don't North Freedom Road or West Lake Road or any of those other places have any, any surveying done?
I think it was under the request of somebody, and there was a property dispute in that, Jerome. Um, I think Roxanne can probably answer those questions better than I can.
Commissioner, is it would be okay to address this during the public hearing?
Yeah.
Okay, yep. Would that be okay with you? We'll address it during the public hearing.
Well, where is that, when is that?
It's coming up soon.
Coming up soon.
Yeah.
All right, we'll do that.
All right, thanks. And then we have, oh, Mike Landware? Levenduski, okay.
I know it's on your agenda as well for the mutual aid consideration again.
Would you state your name and address, Mike, just for record?
Sure. Mike Levenduski, 11709 85th Avenue Northeast Foley. The, a couple weeks ago, during the board meeting, what was being discussed, the day before, so it'd been a Monday. You're sitting here on Tuesday considering sending resources down to Minneapolis to help them with their law enforcement issues. The day before, their council is going on TV, making public statements regarding their thoughts about sending too many cops, and there's going to be too many soldiers, and they don't like the look of this in their city. This is coming from their council. That's on a Monday. On Tuesday, you're sitting here at the request of the sheriff to send resources, Benton County resources down there. It's, it's mind blowing. The people of Minneapolis voted for this council, for their mayor. Unfortunately, sometimes you have to live by your decisions, and if that's what they're deciding to do, so be it. They have time. If, if they see that local law enforcement's not going to be sending people, they have weeks yet before things are going to get out of hand, that they could be calling for more state resources and for the National Guard to up their response. So they can do something if they don't get enough response, and I don't think, from what you're going to see, there are a lot of local agencies that are sending. Maybe the sheriff will address that later on. And then finally, if, if there's a precedent sent here about sending Benton County resources, where does it end? Because this is not going to be the last time that Minneapolis is, is going to be in, in trouble. This is one situation. You look what's happened in Portland and Seattle, it's been ongoing for months and months. And so the next time Minneapolis, because of their lack of preparation, needs help, are we going to continue then to send more resources? So think down the road what's going to happen in that regard, as well as the risk, Tibetan County's insurance standing, if we have someone injured or killed. Thank you.
All right, thanks for the comments. Then we'll move on to the consent agenda. I'm looking for approval of items one through eight, and if anybody wants any of those pulled for further discussion, state now, otherwise I'll entertain a motion.
So moved.
Second.
Motion's been made in second it to approve the consent agenda with items number one through eight. Any other discussion on them? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Carry. Roxanne, from the Department of Development.
Okay. So this morning, we have before you the public hearing on the assessment of costs for the Boundary Commission plat, number one, in Watap Township. This has been, gosh, a year and a half in the making since summer 2019. This came before us as a request to establish a Boundary Commission per state statute to correct and address property line issues for the parcels, as shown in the plat on the screen here. The plat consists of 22 lots and right-of-way for Watap Township. What we saw were property lines, as shown on the deed, were not in conformance with the property being occupied, thereby creating clouds on titles and property line concerns and issues. During this process, we also felt that it would be appropriate to make non-conforming lots more in conformance. So what you see is lots 14, 15, 16, I believe 13 as well, and lot eight. They all consisted of multiple lots that were smaller than what our code allows for, and they were separated. So they legally, they couldn't be sold separate, but by combining them and plating them as one, they're now legal lots. So it helps bring these properties closer to conformance. We began this process in 2019. We met with the property owners in the township. We held several meetings, public meetings. We've brought it to the Boundary Commission, discussed it with them, addressed concerns with property owners, met on site with property owners. We had the county surveyor, acting as the surveyor, meeting with the folks out there, touching base with them on all the property owners, on property corners. And then we had David Meyer of Rinkie Noonan assisting us through the research of all of the deeds, any mortgages out there, working with the banks. This was no small feat for the county, and I think it may have actually been the first for the county. So it was quite the process, and we've learned a lot through this. The plat was adopted last September by the courts. At that time, anybody who had disputes with the boundary lines did have the ability to address the courts. We did not have any opposition at those, at that hearing. In fact, we do have consent from nearly all of the property owners to the boundaries. There is one that did not consent, but they did not object to it at the court hearing. So with that, we have 66,000, excuse me, I believe it's in here, $66,925.63 is the total cost that we incurred for attorney fees, surveyor fees, staff fees, mailings, publications, notices, that we have as a county incurred for the Boundary Commission plat. In discussions with the county board, we have discussed, excuse me, we've discussed that it would be most appropriate to assess this on a per-lot basis ver property, versus a property owner basis. So we are assessing at 22 lots and the right-of-way, so the township is getting an equal share, or seeing an equal cost assessment for this, as if they were a separate lot. It comes out to $2,909.81 per lot. And through further discussions with the Auditor Treasurer's Office and the county board, we're presenting this at a 10-year payback option and a 2% per year interest rate from the date of the adoption of the assessment resolution. With that, I would entertain any questions from the county board.
Any questions from county board? Oh, I don't hear any.
If, I know Michelle's on the line as well, if there's anything she would like to add.
Michelle, do you have anything you'd like to add?
I believe Roxanne has covered it for now.
All right, thanks. So, okay, then the, the next item on our agenda is a public hearing to consider the Benton County Boundary Rod Commission plat number one. Before opening the public hearing, we will, you'll first hear from staff, which we already have. If the, if the item, the agenda item requires an applicant to be up here before the, invite them to the podium. So we're opening the public hearing for, now we will have public comment. If there's anyone in the audience who wishes to address the county board on this item, if so, please come to the podium, give your name and address. If the audience, and I think we do have quite a few people online for this. So if the audience size is large, the county board, board chair may want to state that the chair may limit the speakers to three minutes, so that everyone can be heard. And if you have the same comments as somebody in before you, please state that you agree with the, you know, you can come and state your name and your address, but state that you agree with the people before you, or if you have new comments, you're welcome to do that. So the public hearing is now open. Does anybody in the audience wish to speak?
Do I?
Yep.
Look over there?
Yep.
Mr. Chair.
Yes.
Uh, I want to know why we are picked on when the rest of the county isn't. Why, why do we have to be the surveyors?
What I understand from this, and Roxanne can, can chime in here, is that there was a, there was disputes about property lines.
But it, it's all on, when I bought this property 45 years ago, the exact, exact marking is there.
It's the same today as it was 45 years ago.
And it was 40 some years ago.
But I, I do believe there was properties within that part that we surveyed that weren't like that. And then we had to straighten them out.
I know most of these people down there, and I don't think they have any property.
Can you address Senator Roxanne, or Michelle?
It, it wasn't property line issues between neighbors necessarily, but it was a discrepancy noted between what is being occupied and what's on the deed, which causes issues with the title companies, because they're insuring property that isn't actually being occupied. So it makes it difficult for title companies to provide insurance on properties. And I think Michelle has additional comment.
Michelle? Go ahead.
I would just state that Roxanne, we identified that. The dispute is not necessarily between property owners, but the dispute exists between what is believed to be the property and what is legally described. So that has been, what's been corrected.
One, what did she say? I didn't hear 100%.
Could you re-
Could, could you repeat that, Michelle?
Thank you.
You bow. So the dispute isn't necessarily between.
The property.
Property owners. The dispute exists between the actual legally written description and what is believed to be the property and as occupied. So what a person occupies and believes to be their property was not in line with the written legal description that was recorded, and that is where the difficulty and dispute came in.
Most of this is, it's because of they, they didn't, they got everything from us when they do the surveying, and somebody here doesn't put it down right.
I can't answer to that, Jerome.
That, that's incorrect. We have a deed that describes a property, and that is what gets, that's what's recorded. We have a deed that describes a property, and that is what gets, that's what's recorded, and that's what we show. But when you overlay the aerial photo, you can, you can physically see that the lines do not match up with the property being occupied versus the deeded property.
So nobody, everybody has got their lines straight in the whole county?
No.
And, and when we were at the meeting down there at Watab,
Yep.
They said, surveyors would, can be off. They can be off.
Sure.
Well, what the hell? What, what does this mean? I, I don't, I, I mean, I, I'll pay us, but I want, I want to know why it wasn't recorded right from the beginning.
That's long before our...
It was recorded right. The problem occurs when, in a specific situation like this, you have overlaps in the descriptions based on where the starting point is for the survey. So if they're surveying from north to south versus south to north, you end, you can end up with overlaps because you have short quarter-quarter sections. And when you have extremely brief descriptions, such as the, the south 30, or the south 660 feet of quarter, of the northeast quarter, well, if the, if the quarter-quarter is short, it doesn't have 1,200 feet. It only has, maybe it has 1,000, and so when somebody else describes the south 660, you end up with an overlap, or maybe it's a, it's a bigger quarter-quarter section. And I think you all can understand that some, they're not all 40 acres, correct? Every quarter-quarter. So that's where these discrepancies occur. And over time, they've been using logs and chains to start off this, and so over time, these, these property line issues compound themselves, and we end up, when we're splitting up smaller lots, we end up with more and more issues.
And I, I think it all, if I'm correct, Roxanne, is that it all boils down to your title insurance again, that there must have been a person in there that sold or something that couldn't get insurance.
I, I can't, I, there probably is, but as far as I know, and I only have a little piece of land,
Mm-hmm.
but I'm still charged the same amount.
That was based on a per-lot basis when we did that. That, the county board decided that back in September, I believe, because we didn't feel it was fair for somebody that had a larger portion and could split it later on to get charged once. Instead, the, the lots were conformed to be a lot, and they would be charged for each lot that they have, instead of just, you know, one time.
Well, who, who is, who is having all the problems? You must know who's having the problems.
Michelle, I believe you received a letter. Did you want to address that?
Certainly. So the county received a letter from Mr. Kynes, who was having issues selling some property up there, and they asked that we initiate a boundary commission. When we took a look at that area, what we discovered is if we correct one area, it's going to have a domino effect. And everyone else's legal descriptions need to be rectified, and quiet title actions individually would need to be taken. So, we entertained the idea, based on this request, to open a boundary commission. And so that has been the catalyst to get us to the point today. And really, the only issue before the board today isn't the legitimacy of the boundary commission, it isn't whether or not you agree with the boundary plat, which has been court-ordered. Today is simply whether the assessment is appropriate, and if you have issues with that.
I mean, you know, like Michelle said, it was court-ordered that we had to do something.
Do you gonna do Westlake Road? Are you gonna do North Freedom Road?
Well, I, I would, if it...
The county, or what?
If, if it became, or somebody demanded it, yeah, we'd have to do that too. Or if some title company or some...
So Kynes is the one that, he's gone, you know, he passed away a month or two ago. So his wife is still with us, but I don't, I don't understand this.
You mean actually both of Kynes' their son?
Their son.
Oh, their, okay. Their son is the one.
So anyway, well, okay. And
I know.
And that's it.
Okay. Is there anyone else in the audience that wishes to speak before we go to anybody that's online? Otherwise, we'll move to, is there anybody online that would like to comment on this?
I would like to comment.
Uh, state your name and address.
Roger Erdman, 7797, LaSalle Court, Northeast, at Seegro, Minnesota.
Okay.
And I agree with everything as Jerome's concern there. We have a property, lot number two, has been affected by the survey taken on my side for Rock Lake. And, you know, we did not ask for the survey, evidently, I guess Kynes, I understand how did, but we were only informed of the survey when the meeting was called to attend red argument. At that time, the law dictated to us what they were going to do, but didn't give us any consideration as to how much it actually costs. Instead, the attorneys, the surveys, others who may have been involved were allowed to proceed, as it would seem, without an established budget. Now the same work is done and it's time to pay approximately $3,000. Where the injustice comes in is that some surveys have already been done previously, with some of the same properties have already paid for. However, these surveys were obviously done in incompetent, inaccurate mess, and they all now need to be, or have been redone. Essentially, you are penalizing us for a poorly laid-out survey that should have been done right in the first place. The county should assume some of the responsibility, knowing that their legal descriptions did not match from the original work for years, yet they proceeded to charge the landlords anyway. County has completed the survey, and they wish to change, you know, legal descriptions and charge $3,000 each. This error is not the fault of its property owners, and therefore, it should not fall solely on our shoulders. I believe it's shameful to charge his landlords for the lack of professionalism, poor organization done by the team who did not do the work correctly years ago. However, my mom and dad always told me, don't go whining about a problem unless you have some solutions. And I've come to the court with two very common sense and I feel workable solutions. I understand we're not doing the properties, you know, there may be properties on Sharon Place that are under the same mismanaged, incorrect surveys also, and they're going to have to be done eventually. So, the comment was made also here that, that you have learned a lot from these surveys, and, and I agree with that, but it was at our expense, all the landlord's expense. So, solution number one that I propose, go back to the company or the people that originally conducted the survey, and hold them accountable for this errors, and ask them to make good on it. Typically, these companies have insurance for these types of errors and omissions, and ask them to help rectify or resolve these problems. Solution number two, we suggest the entire Benton County share the responsibility of these updated surveys in order to right the wrong that has been done by the county, in doing so with a 45,000 or 50,000 population of Benton County, and businesses sharing the costs, this dollar amount would be significantly less, which would be, which would be very manageable for everyone. This is a fair use of everyone's tax dollars. After all, you know, this is one of the few lakes that is used by people in the county, and it is part of the community. It increases the value of Benton County by bringing in tourists year-round, people fishing in summer months, swimmers, water steers in the winter months, people ice fishing, snowmobilers, which in turn supports all the surrounding businesses within the area. This is a more reasonable compromise for everyone. And with these properties and future properties, which may have been mismanaged over the past 50, 60 years. So I thank you for hearing me out.
Okay. Michelle, do you have any comments to that?
Certainly. What I would just mention is that the individuals that handled this particular boundary commission had experience in doing boundary commissions. So while it might have been a learning experience for some of us at the county, it was handled by competent individuals who knew what they were doing. The second issue I would like to address is the fact that the county did not create the issues or the disputes between what was actually occupied and then what was legally described on paper. Those were created when lots were split by the surveyors that handled that for the property owner. The county did not have responsibility for the fact that there were those disputes. And unfortunately, this happens, as Roxanne identified previously in the hearing. You have 60 years, you have different techniques, we definitely have better technology today. They received the benefit, these property owners received the benefit, they will have no quiet title issues going forward, and that was not something that the public received the benefit for. It was these individual property owners. And while the county has the ability to do a boundary commission, that doesn't make the county responsible for those issues.
Well, I see, again, it is not the responsibility of the, the homeowners. I mean, that was, that was pushed on to us. It was not our doing in the first place, nor is it our doing now.
One thing I will say is that there was several meetings on this prior to establishing, even before we established that we were going to go forward. There was one that I attended down in Watab, just to see what was going on, and we set a committee to make recommendations and that. And I agree with Michelle on the part that because it was done, you know, years ago, and specific individuals benefited from splitting the slots, and if they weren't done right, it doesn't become the burden of the taxpayers of Benton County, I don't think. So is, is there any other, anybody else online that would like to make comment?
I would.
Okay. And state your name and address.
Stephanie Harner, I actually reside in Arizona, 11131, Sucker Lane. I'm partial owner, though, of lot 12. So my concerns are, first, in the process, I understand you guys said you learned a lot, and that's great. One thing maybe to add to that list of things you've learned is that I am partial owner, I live in Arizona, I didn't receive any notification. The people that I own the property with, they did receive it, but nothing was ever in my name until I actually had to sign something, which then they had to email to me so that I could return it. So maybe have a better way to notify all the owners that are responsible. And then, secondly, our lot is considered non-buildable. Now, with this survey, will the county consider us able to build on it? We are referring these costs, and we have a very small piece of property, so we would like to hope and hope that you guys would consider opening that up with this new survey. Is that something that could be considered?
Roxanne, can you comment on that?
Yes, these, they all should be buildable lots. Is there, is there not a structure on that property?
Currently, there's just a shed, but when we purchased it, it was sold, we couldn't get the title insurance. We bought it not that long ago, so we weren't able to get the title insurance, we bought it knowing that, but we were also told that we couldn't build on it. It's lot number 12, I don't know if you can look at the map or the restrictions there.
I, I guess I would have to do additional research into this property, I don't know all the history behind it.
Okay. But Roxanne, I was under the understanding that all these lots would be buildable after we got this done?
Uh, well, I mean, it's still an existing lot,
Okay.
so I can't fix that. It, it, that hasn't changed, but I do need to look into it. I, I'm sorry, I don't have
Okay.
the, the property files in front of me.
Okay. All right. Is that something that you will email or send out an application to the group, or do we need to contact you separately? How would you like us to go forward?
Certainly, if you'd like to email me or call me, I can, I can get that information to you.
Okay. Thank you, and your name is Michelle?
Roxanne.
Oh, I'm sorry, Roxanne, my apologies. And your last name, Roxanne?
Ackman.
All right, thank you. I will look you up on the website. I appreciate it.
All right, thanks. Anybody else online that wishes to comment?
This is Roger Erdman, still online. I just want to mention that lot number three, next to us, owned by Jerome Nelson, is not buildable.
Okay, thanks for the comment. Anybody else?
Yes, this is Michelle Simmons, lot number one. I'm at 4804 Richard Lane in Eagan, is our actual home residence. I just, I agree with almost everything Roger said, I don't want to reiterate any of that, but I do want to speak to your comment about how the, how this is going to benefit everybody when people go to sell, and, you know, allows the title companies to be more accurate. It actually harms our lot, because now the line has been moved to cover it through our garage, so when we go to sell, we're now going to have major issues with a property line running through our garage. I don't know how, how you can say it's going to benefit everybody when we didn't ask for it, there's nothing to the north of us, which would have, all they had to do is move the property line five feet, they wanted to have a problem, or keep it where it was. Now it's created problems, and on top of that, we have to pay almost $3,000 for something we never asked for, so I just want to point out that this isn't really helping us or benefiting us, as you keep saying.
Okay, thank you. Does anybody have any comments, Michelle or Roxanne, about that?
Just to address the property line going through that garage, that's always been an issue. People used to build things without permits all the time. When you build them without permits or surveys, they get placed in locations that maybe don't meet setbacks or are across property lines. The property to the east is actually a Torrance property, so it creates issues when you have abstract property versus Torrance property, they're described differently, and so there really isn't that ability to just shift the property line. And, and we didn't shift the property line, the property line's where it's supposed to be in this case. And to be fair, that would have been an issue no matter what. If, I, I think you've maybe heard of people coming across issues where they have disputes over property lines going through, through houses, garages, fences, and they have to move things. So this could have been a, a issue in the future with any property owners, if the title companies were aware of it and had, took issue with it. So it, while we didn't clear up this issue, we also didn't create it.
Okay, thanks, Michelle, or thanks, Roxanne. Anybody else online that would like to comment? One more call for anybody else that's online that would like to comment.
Yeah, Drew Kynes, actually, I'm calling from Hong Kong, where I live now. My father-in-law passed away recently. And I guess the only thing I would just add to that, I agree with a lot of statements that Jerome and Roger have made, and the others who have spoken about the, kind of being bit surprised about the cost on this in the end, not being aware that it was going to cost that much when we went into this. We had asked about trying to find out what happened with some of these property lines when we got feedback about our property, saying it was, you know, there was some inconsistencies, some unclear lines. And at one point, I believe it's on that, that intersection by Sharon Place, we were even told that there was no monuments along, marking where the county right-of-way was. So a lot of that kind of started at that point. So I guess that, that, that thing that Roger raised about, you know, the learning process, and, and also what Jerome mentioned about the fact that there's a wider problem across the entire county. I do hope that there is, this learning process is something that possibly could be shared, if nothing else, to at least some more of the right-of-way can pick it up. Because I think this, it, it did shock a lot of us, especially for my mother and, you know, my late father, they, they have quite a few pieces that are actually not even close to this area that we were at. I, I think if we had known this was going to happen in the first place, we would have certainly hesitated and probably looked at the quiet title approach rather than this.
Okay. Michelle, you have any comment on that one?
You know, we, we had to, we dealt with this section that we thought was appropriate. It was chosen based on feedback and inputs. Unfortunately, this whole area had issues, and there were multiple... Unfortunately, this whole area had issues, and there were multiple lots that had issues. So again, that domino effect was a concern, and now it should be straight for all of these lots, so.
Okay. Anybody else that's online and wishes to comment? One more time, anybody else online that wishes to comment?
Just one final comment, Roger Erbney again. Everything that was done here was not at the request of the homeowners. And I just feel it's impractical to charge all of us for these fees, fees, based on all the surveys done in the past, which, which were done apparently according to HOIL. And now you're throwing the charges back on us. And we're paying for your mistakes. And that's my final comment, thank you.
Okay, thanks. Anybody else online that wishes to comment? One more time, anybody else online that wishes to comment? Okay. At this time, the public hearing will now be closed. So are there any emails, letters, or other communications to be read for the record?
I just want to make note that I did speak with Rita Kynes last week. She discussed, she wanted some clarification on her property lines, I assisted her with that. Of course, she's disappointed in the cost assessment and how it's occurring. That was the extent of our conversation. And then Michelle Simeon had emailed me, which I provided you a copy of her email, and she did present this morning. So other than that, I'm not aware of any other comments. Nadine, I believe you're online, I don't, comments were supposed to come into your office. If there was an objection, I don't know if you want to just let us know if you received anything?
Yep, I did not receive anything in my office.
Okay, thanks Nadine.
Yep.
Has the department received any comments, concerns from state agencies, cities, townships on this agenda?
No, I, Watap Township was provided the same notice that all the property owners were with one assessment cost. I have not received any comment from them. They did pass a resolution, I believe it was last year, saying that they would account for one lot's cost. What they passed was not twenty-nine hundred dollars, however, they will be subject to that same assessment. And like I said, I didn't receive comment from them regarding that increased cost.
Okay, thank you. Is there any, oh, you already answered, this is, if any official action was required by the affected township, there was action taken then?
They did not need to, well,
They didn't.
they didn't need to take action.
They didn't need to take action, but they did.
Mm-hmm.
Okay, thank you. All right, now the county board will now have time for questions of the staff and discussion. As a reminder to the audience, the public hearing is now closed. If there are any questions or comments from the board members before we take action on this item, so. Questions or comments, concerns? Yes, Steve? Okay, so then we have to roll.
So Roxanne, let's, let's back up forty, fifty years ago. Let's just put this in a little bit of different perspective. Let's just say forty or fifty years ago, one person owned all of this land. They chose to split it. So it was on that individual to hire the surveyor to split it, correct? And it wasn't on the county?
Correct.
So everything back done forty or fifty years ago was back on that property owner that hired the surveyor.
Correct. And we are legally bound to record documents as long as they're in a recordable format, even if they are incorrect.
Correct. So the only liability the county had was to record all of the documentation given to them by that individual or individuals that split those lots.
Correct.
For the surveyor.
Correct.
So how does this come back on the county, having the county's fault, when it could have been done correctly forty or fifty years ago? Now, technology has changed considerably. And another question would be, on these property lines, how many of them actually moved? They would move two or three feet, I'm assuming, or five feet?
There were a number of them that actually moved, I apologize, I wish I had the overlay that should, yes.
Overlay would be nice.
Yes, I, I'm sorry, I do not have that.
Because that'd give us a little clearer understanding of what was done forty or fifty years ago compared to now.
Right. It would show you the occupancy lines versus the deeded lines.
Right. And now everyone has legal documents for selling.
Yes.
Everyone is completely legal now, versus in the past, not so much.
Right.
Because they would have had to have it resurveyed anyway thirty years ago in order to sell.
I'm sorry, say that again. I have just a tickle in my throat.
I'm sorry. So, so, you know, people that would bought this property thirty years ago would have had to get it surveyed anyway, more than likely, unless they chose not to.
Right. It, it would really depend on their financer, their title companies, some require it, some don't. It depends on if you're paying with cash versus, you know,
Loan.
obtaining a mortgage.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions, Jared?
Mr. Chair. Roxanne, just a clarification, this started about a year and a half ago now?
Yes.
Okay. And with that said, it was started by Mr. Kynes, Joseph? The letter was sent in?
Yes, the attorney's office received a letter from his attorney.
And at that point, it went to a court order?
Nope.
Okay.
At that point, we discussed a boundary commission. And this actually isn't the first time that subject has been brought up. The county has not necessarily been in favor of doing that over the years, and finally, after so many requests, it felt, we felt like it was time to address the concerns that were occurring in this area.
Okay. And then we've heard from one individual today that actually couldn't get title insurance. So
Right.
I would bet that's going to fall on a lot of people if they were to sell before this.
Okay. Any other questions, comments? I guess my only comment was that we had a comment about, you know, the county should pick it up, and I guess, you know, this could happen again, it could happen in the rural areas, and we could have a domino effect that, you know, the county would be picking up a lot of boundary commission surveys, and that was something that was discussed way back when we started this, and it was something that the county board at that time did not see as a fair way to go. And that's why the assessment is on a per-lot basis here. I mean, so five years down the road, we could have another big one, and then they would be assessed unequal, you know, the same as if we did it to the whole county. We couldn't set a precedence where we let one go to the county and the next one be assessed at maybe two individual property owners. So that is why it was pretty much recommended that it be on a per parcel basis when we did that, so.
Mr. Chair, if I could, if I could just go on, on Commissioner Kapinski's question, and, and maybe Michelle, I'll have you walk us through this timeline, because I know Roxanne's dealing with a tickle in her throat right now. If you could pick up maybe where Roxanne left off in regards to the boundary commission now has been established, and then I think for the public's sake, if you could just give us a, a short version of the timeline that brings us to today, please?
You bet. So actually, we, we resolved this matter fairly quickly in terms of court time, so just note that, even though it took a year and a half, that's actually fairly quickly. So we received a request. Then we had a committee of the whole, where the board was presented with information regarding boundary commissions and what the purposes, and whether or not they even wanted to consider going forward with the boundary commission. As Roxanne previously noted, in the past, during the recession, they chose not to go forward on a boundary commission in a different area. But at this time, they thought after the committee of the whole meeting and reading the letter sent by Mr. Kynes's attorney, that it may be appropriate to address the boundary dispute issue in this particular area. Then it went to the board, a hearing was held regarding the boundary commission and going forward. It was determined that it should go forward, and then from there, we got experts on board. Jay, our surveyor, has done this before. We also asked David Myers from Rink Nuneen to assist, he has done multiple boundary commissions as well. We held our first meeting, and at that meeting, we had originally suggested a larger area to cover under this particular boundary commission. We heard a lot of individuals say, you know, this was done under a plat, we just did a quiet title action to the south of this particular section. And at that point, it was determined that the boundary commission would only address the specific area that you have before you now. So we actually left off about half of those properties based on that. So we then proceeded with public meetings and had feedback from individuals. We had, as Roxanne previously stated, the surveyor going out to the properties, meeting with the property owners, having them state their properties where they thought they owned, and then trying to rectify the legal descriptions with what they occupied. So then, once we got that done, we held another public meeting. And at that point, we showed the results, and we proposed to have individuals sign consents to the boundary lines as represented on that new plat. So we got consent, I believe, from almost ninety, ninety-five percent of the individuals, and it was then presented in court after we had all that information. And we did not have any objections to the boundary commission or the plat at the court level. The court then took official action on the boundary commission and ordered that the plat be what is legal title for all of these lots. So we got, like I said, no objection at that point to the boundary commission. Once that was completed, we started the totaling of the costs and decided what to do with the assessment, and held a hearing to determine what it should be held at, the ten-year, two percent, and per-lot basis. And now we're here to, for the public hearing to adopt the assessment whole.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Chair.
Yes. Go ahead, Steve.
So I remember coming on this board, even before we started this boundary commission. I remember individuals coming in front of us, arguing, complaining about their neighbors because they had issues with the property lines. One, one said it was on one side, one said it was on the other side. So that was another starting point with this, is try to clear, clear that up.
Okay, thank you.
Anybody else have any questions, comments?
I have questions.
Okay, Beth.
So according to what they said, the people that were in these lots said where they thought the boundaries were, and that's what they went on?
So they marked their ad occupied what they believed to be their lot? And the issue was, is really they tried to maintain that occupied area, and most of it matched up, we got fortunate with this. So what it resulted in was they just redid the legal description, the written legal description now matches what is currently occupied. So they tried to respect what the property owners identified.
Okay, it sounds like the property owners are still confused about that.
Yeah, it does, but we didn't have to shift anyone's property, they didn't lose property, it's just now the legal descriptions reflect what they're occupying for the most part.
Okay, so what, what about that person that built the shed or whatever it was, that building? And that seems to be on somebody else's property, or do they still have that property?
Beth, they didn't build the shed, the shed was on the property when they bought it.
Oh, okay.
Yep, so that's, that's property line issue, and they could be asked to remove it, but they could have been asked to remove it prior to. We chose not to address that as a part of our action for the boundary commission because that's more of a DoD issue, and they had that issue before the boundary commission.
Was this the part that, was not their property, is that being used by somebody else?
I'm sorry, what was that question?
A property that that building is on, does somebody else inhabit the property that, where it's supposed to be, where it is?
Michelle, I can
From my understanding, that, that shed crosses the property line, so it's partially on their property, and then it's also on someone else's property.
And the one, and the someone else's, is that property inhabited?
No.
Roxanne?
It, it's not, they, there's no one that actually lives on that property. The property owner, Dwayne Ott, is aware of the issue.
Okay, that, that is an issue probably between the two, two property owners. Now, it's not an issue. It's not an issue for this, for this meeting, Beth. That issue, it belongs to the property owners, not to the assessment.
Mr. Chair.
Yes.
And according to these plots, it doesn't look like they should be equally assessed because some have been developed, some have not been developed.
Um, Beth, that was, that, that motion was made prior to, to this year about how we were going to go about this. That was made that we would assess each lot individually and we'll move on from there. We're not going to discuss about the size of the lots or how much it's, each one's going to be assessed, because we didn't want to get into the per square foot or anything like that. So that we're not going to discuss today.
Okay, so then I'll be discussing other challenges?
No, that, that's already been discussed. Hey, that's already been discussed.
The, the previous board did all of that before you got on board.
Okay, is there any other comments?
I was just gonna, Mr. Chair, I was just gonna make one more comment. This is another, basically, technology advancement. I mean, twenty, thirty years ago, these lines probably would have never been argued or anything like that, but now with people not getting title insurance, making lots hard to sell without this clarification is, I mean, whether, whether we like it or not, we're kind of, we can't put this out to the county to pay, this has got to be, basically put on the individuals that it's, it's helping. I know there's one that with the line going through a garage, it's not helping, but that line was there way before.
Right.
So we're kind of stuck with what we can do here.
Okay, thanks, Jared. Any other discussion? Any other discussion from the county board? Hearing none, I'll ask for
This means, this needs to be addressed to, in with people's property and their lives, and this uniformity for each separate lot being the same amount? I think this needs to be further discussed.
Okay, thanks.
Mr. Chair.
Yes.
I, when we went over this a month or so ago, one of the things that we brought up is we do understand that this twenty-nine oh nine point eighty-one is a lot. That's why we chose to go out ten years on it, too.
Mm-hmm, correct.
So.
Any other discussion, although the reason I entertain a motion?
So moved.
So moved.
What's the motion?
The motion will be to accept the assessment total dollars of sixty-six thousand nine twenty-five sixty-three and divert those in regards to the properties that have been identified in plat one.
Is there a second?
Second.
So motion's been made, and second it that we assess the individual properties the equal amount of sixty-six thousand some odd dollars. Is there any other discussion on this? Any other discussion? Hearing none?
We need that roll call vote.
Yep, well, Beth, would you call the roll?
Commissioner Shlongin?
No.
Commissioner Johnson?
Aye.
Commissioner Pop?
Aye.
Commissioner Kapinski?
Aye.
Commissioner Heinem?
Aye.
Motion carries on a four to one. Thank you for your time, Roxanne, on that one.
I'll just stand right here.
Yep.
Thank you, Michelle, too.
So Roxanne, you're up again. Now we're going to conduct a public hearing to consider the Cove fourth addition?
Yes, this would be extremely quick.
Okay.
Okay, so this Okay, so this is the final plat of the Cove fourth addition. This originally came to us as a major subdivision with a number of lot combinations within the Cove. So the preliminary plat was approved back in December of twenty nineteen and has since been delayed. Approval of that plat was contingent on the completion of the wastewater treatment facility, the acceptance of a number of roads within that development by the township, and then turning over the wastewater treatment facility to the homeowners association. We have received all documents and happy to say, and I think Mr. Brownson is happy to say, that those items are now complete. And so before you, you have the final plat of just five of the lots, well, I should say ten lots being combined into five. As you can see on here, the lots outlined in red are the ones that are part of the Cove fourth addition. The remaining blue lots are part of the preliminary plat and are planned to be combined at a later date. But Mr. Brownson is choosing to move forward in phases, get these few lots out there, get them sold, and then move forward with final plating and combining of the additional lots. Watab Township is aware of this. They have passed a resolution to vacate the drainage and utility easements between these lots so that they can be properly combined.
Okay, and that's all you have before you then. So before we open the public hearing, we heard from the staff reports. Is the applicant present or the representative here to come to the podium and give their name and address if they wish?
Do you want to?
I don't need to.
We'll now open the public hearing. Is there anyone in the audience who wishes to address the county board on this agenda? If so, please come to the podium, state your name and address. Anybody, anybody online that wishes to address this? One more time, is anybody in the audience or online that wishes to address this item on the public hearing? Final call for anybody that wants to address the county board. Okay, the public hearing is now closed. Is there any emails, letters, or communications to be read?
No.
Has the department received any comments or concerns from state agencies, cities, townships, or on this agenda?
Watab Township is in favor of the lot combinations.
Okay. So there was official action, just that they are in favor of it?
The official action was they vacated drainage and utility easements between them. They did take action to approve the preliminary plat, and they will be signing the final plat.
Okay. The county board will now have time to, for questions of staff and discussion. As a reminder to the audience, public hearing is now closed. Is there any other comments from board members on this item? Any other comments?
Chair, planning commission did review this the other night. I realize that it wasn't something the planning commission had to review.
Okay.
But Roxanne did bring it in front of us, and there were no concerns at the planning commission level. It was recommended right away to off to the county board.
All right, thanks for that. Any other comments? Otherwise, I'll entertain a motion.
I'll move to approve the final plat, the Cove four addition, and authorize the chair to sign a final plat.
Second.
Motion's been made, and second it. Do we have any other comments? Hearing none, Beth, would you call the roll?
Commissioner Shlongin?
Aye.
Commissioner Johnson?
Aye.
Commissioner Pop?
Aye.
Commissioner Kapinski?
Aye.
Commissioner Heinem?
Aye.
Passed. Okay, Roxanne?
Mark is going to come up and do the next item.
Okay.
And I'm just going to wipe this down, just to be safe for everybody. It's allergies, I promise.
I'm glad to know it's just allergies.
It is.
Morning, Mr. Chair, Commissioners.
Good morning.
So what you have in front of you, hopefully, is a solid waste facility licensure renewals. There's five solid waste facilities in the county that we license. Allied Waste Republic, which is Minden Transfer Station, Waste Management out of St. Cloud, Tri-County Organics, which does source separated organics, Hinkamire Landfill, which is a demolition landfill, and Tommy Kramer Inc., which does kind of a, they have a permit by rule to do source separated recycling, demolition, transfer, those types of things. So I, basically, all five facilities are currently licensed by the state of Minnesota. They're in good standing with the state. I've sent all five applicants their license criteria. They've reviewed them, returned them. None of them have requested any changes. And so, and currently, they're all, currently, they meet the solid waste ordinance requirements. So per the Benton County ordinance, basically states that the county board will set the bonding insurance requirements and a requirement of whether or not any of the facilities pay into what's called a post-closure test water, test well monitoring fund. Basically, if something would go awry, it would be dollars we could set aside to put in test wells. The only one we've done that on in the past was Hinkamire Landfill. We've maxed out what we can charge them, so we no longer can, we no longer do that. For the past three years, we haven't required that. So staff is recommending that, currently, the bond and the insurance for the current facilities, we require a ten thousand dollar bond, insurance, minimum liability of one point five million, and we have none of them paying into a test well monitoring fund. And that would be staff's recommendation.
Okay. That was the staff report. Is the applicant present here to come to the podium and state? Any of the people? No? Okay. We'll now open the public hearing. Is there anyone in the audience who, audience are online that wishes to address, address the county board on this agenda item? If so, please come to the podium, state your name and address. Anybody? I don't see anybody speaking up on, online. I'll have the final call for anyone in the audience or online that wishes to address this item. Is there any emails, letters, or other communications written to the record? Oh, first, the public hearing is now closed. Then we'll go to emails.
There are none.
Or letters, there is none. Has the department had any concerns from state agencies, cities, or townships?
None.
Okay. Any official action by the township affected?
No.
Okay. The county board will now have questions for the staff and discussion. As a reminder to the audience, county, the public hearing is now closed. Is there any comments from the board?
Mr. Chair. Go ahead, Mark.
Just so you're aware, the staff would request two motions, one to set the bonding insurance and the test well monitoring.
Okay.
Second one would direct the chair to sign the licensure.
Thanks, Mark. Okay, Steve.
Mr. Chair. Monty, we had the discussion last year, I think it was, about our limited insurance. Doesn't the county require two million, or was it at one point five?
Michelle, can you remind us about those TERC caps? I think it's one point five. I believe it's one point five, but.
I think she left.
Let's see.
He's there.
Yeah, she maybe stepped away.
Okay, well, we can just.
The TERC cap is generally one point five.
It is, okay. I know we had the discussion about that, about going to two, that's all. Just wanted a clarification.
I get, go ahead. No, go ahead.
I'm going to make a motion.
Oh, I guess the only comment I had is that you said we are maxed out on the testing water deal. How long ago has it been, or don't we have any regulation in that? You know, all that, all that stuff has gotten more expensive in the last five years. So do we need to raise that, or do we need to do something maybe a little different there?
It's statutorily set, so the state rules.
Okay, so we can't? No, we can't do, okay.
At this point, unless they change the statute.
Okay, thanks for that. Okay.
Mr. Chair, Mark, all five of these hollers have been in Benton County for quite a while, right?
Correct. TK, Tommy Kramer Inc. is newer, but he operates in another county.
Right.
All the operated. I receive almost zero complaints, other than, you know, the typical wind blowing. And they do a really good job of cleaning up themselves, so.
Okay.
Thank you.
Anything else?
Mr. Chair, I'll make a motion to approve the twenty-twenty-one solid waste management facility licenses as presented with the bonding and insurance dollars presented.
Second. Motion's been made, and second it to sign the twenty-twenty-one license and bonding and, or, you want to have, and order the chair to sign?
Yeah, you want, need a separate motion? Okay.
Yeah.
Just clear of that way.
Just approval of the licenses.
Okay, just approving of the licensing. Any other discussion? Hearing none, Beth, would you call the roll?
Commissioner Shlongin?
Aye.
Commissioner Johnson?
Aye.
Commissioner Pop?
Aye.
Commissioner Kapinski?
Aye.
Commissioner Heinem?
Aye.
Motion carried.
Mr. Chair, I'll make a motion to adopt, to allow the board to sign those contracts and licensures.
I'll second that again. Motion's been made, and second it to have the board chair sign them licenses, that? Any further discussion? Hearing none, Beth, would you call the roll?
Commissioner Shlongin?
Aye.
Commissioner Johnson?
Aye.
Commissioner Pop?
Aye.
Commissioner Kapinski?
Aye.
Commissioner Heinem?
Aye.
All right, motion carried.
Thank you.
Thanks both Roxanne and.
We'll let you get on with the meeting now.
All right, thank you. At this time, we'll recess the regular meeting to conduct Human Services Board meeting.
At this time, at this time, we'll call the Human Services Board meeting to order. Is there any changes to the agenda?
Bob, you got any changes, anything new?
I have no changes.
Any changes from the board?
I'll make a motion to approve the agenda as presented.
I'll second it.
Okay, you got a motion, and second, any further discussion? Oh, favor, roll call, Beth?
Commissioner Shlongin?
Aye.
Commissioner Johnson?
Aye.
Commissioner Pop?
Aye.
Commissioner Kapinski?
Aye.
Commissioner Heinem?
Aye.
Next consent agenda, consent agenda, we only have one. Motion, entertain a motion for that?
I'll move motion to approve the, approve the amended, or I'm sorry, meeting minutes for March second, two thousand twenty-one.
Second.
Okay, got a motion, and second, any further discussion? Call the question, Beth?
Commissioner Shlongin?
Aye.
Commissioner Johnson?
Aye.
Commissioner Pop?
Aye.
Commissioner Kapinski?
Aye.
Commissioner Heinem?
Aye.
Bob, do you have anything to add, talk about right now?
I do not have anything unless there are questions.
So Thursday and Friday went pretty well at the Soccer Rapids Community Center with the shots, correct?
That I've heard is the case, yes.
I did stop by there and talked to a few people, so. They were busy, both days, really busy.
Steve, I got one, one comment. Bob, yesterday I was on from AMC, they had a mental health deal on. And do you have any concerns in your department on some of the mental health of some of your workers that have been out there? They were even talking upper management down to the, you know, low-end workers. Do you have any concerns, or do you see anything that, you know, we should be looking for or addressing?
Yeah, we have a fair amount of concerns with the mental health process all through the state, and I think that that's something that maybe we could either do as part of our next cowl, or we could certainly provide some type of an update for you, for the board, because there are many things, the ability to place children, the ability to place adults, homelessness, that there, and furthermore, the idea of detox and things like that, too. I know that's not specifically mental health, but it's, a lot of people have mental health issues and using issues. So I think that that's something that we would be willing to come before the board to give a presentation of where we're at with that.
Okay, I guess the biggest concern was about the people in the county that are working with, you know, you hit the first three right on the head, that the people that are working with these people, that they're seeing some mental health issues with them going forward, and that, you know, don't let your county fall behind and not address these issues until it's too late, you know, from our staff and that.
And we do have the Adult Mental Health Initiative that we as a region, or as the four counties, address a lot of these issues together, so.
Okay.
I know that our mental health supervisor has been out and will be out for a couple more days.
Okay.
So I think once she gets back, we can get, give you a better update on where we're at with. And furthermore, if we could be a little bit more precise on what you're, what you're asking, that may help, too.
Okay.
What I'll do is I'll go back with the AMC information that I get and try and pull that together as well.
Okay, thanks.
Thank you.
Mr. Chair.
In city, go ahead, sir.
I just want to make a quick comment, Bob. I talked to four individuals that had their shots last week, and they were extremely pleased on the organization of everything and how quickly it went. This has been a consensus that I haven't had one person say that this has been a horrible situation to go through. Everybody I've talked to said that your staff is doing an absolute great job. So, thank you.
Well, and I would agree with you on that. I think that there's some things that we're going to have to deal with coming up. I know that just yesterday, the Civic Center is going to be used for a thousand and up to eighteen hundred shots on Wednesdays, once a week, so, starting next Wednesday. And that's going to, what we're having as far as a problem right now is we have multiple inputs as far as trying to get shots. And yesterday, we were trying to prepare for our, our vaccine clinic, and we had sixty people that were not in Benton County that we had to shave off of our appointments. So that left a situation where we had, we get so many shots, we try to fill these appointments, and then we find out that they're not from Benton County. Or in the case where we end up with Civic Center, we may end up with lots of people that don't show up because they go to the clinic, or go to the Civic Center. So I think that there's a lot of stuff that we're going to have to do, and I know that I have talked to with Sam this morning, and I'm going to talk with Monty as well. We're probably going to have to have a little bit more organization as far as what we're going to do countywide with the idea that the Civic Center is now going to be a thing, and they're going to be doing many people. So just to let you know that that's something that's on the immediate horizon regarding vaccines.
Thank you. Anything else for Bob? Okay, at this time, we'll adjourn the Human Service Board meeting and turn it back over to the chair.
Okay, and at this time, we'll have Monty, County Administrator, on a public hearing for Performance Food.
I think we'll turn right over to Amanda.
Okay.
Good morning, Chair, Pop, and Benton County Commissioners. In your packet this morning, you should have a memo, a resolution for consideration. And so a memo for me, a memo from Ellers, and a resolution for consideration. And then Monty's going to pull up the presentation.
We're off in theory.
Yep, there you go, there you go. Good deal, awesome.
I want to do a share screen business here, so everyone at home can see it. Let's see here. Roxanne's really good at this. Let's see, share screen.
There we go.
Go in.
There we go.
Let's see, I want to actually, where's my view?
See, I think it, like slideshow, maybe? Okay, we'll just, we'll hold on to that for a second.
Yep, and I can minimize this. Okay.
Okay, thank you. Got it. So I'm going to, I'm going to provide you a little bit of background on the requests this, this morning, and then I'll turn it over to Lloyd, who is the general manager at Performance Food Group, to conduct the presentation, so you have a little bit of further background on what the project actually consists of.
Okay.
Some diagrams and pictures of what is being proposed. So the City of Rice and Benton County have received a request for tax abatement assistance in the form of pay. So the City of Rice and Benton County have received a request for tax abatement assistance in the form of pay-as-you-go tax abatement financing submitted by the developer. Their request for assistance is related to the proposed expansion of their existing facility in the City of Rice. The project may include up to two phases, which is addressed in the memo from Ellers. Nothing has changed since you saw this memo about a month ago at your meeting. Again, the the project Phase One is a demolition of approximately sixty-five hundred square feet of existing building footprint and the construction of a new twenty-two thousand five hundred square foot building. That would include some new cooler and processing space, and then Phase Two would substantially renovate twenty-five thousand square feet for the added cooler space. The project itself is anticipated to create twenty-two new jobs within two years at an average wage of forty-five thousand per year, and the company currently employs two hundred and eighty-five full-time employees, or equivalents, I should say. The developer's total tax abatement request is six hundred thousand. That's with approximately two hundred of that being requested from the City of Rice and four hundred, up to four hundred thousand being requested from the county over a period of fifteen years, and we put fifteen years there because depending on when Phase Two starts, it could be two or three years after Phase One, so we're getting ten years of total tax abatement, and that's why we've put that in your documentation. It should be noted that the the tax abatement request is only on the new taxable value, so we're not abating any existing taxable value on this project. So the the tax abatement assistance would be used to finance certain costs associated with the demolition and construction on the twelve point four million dollar project. I also want to note that the City of Rice held a public hearing on March 1st, invited public to comment on the proposed abatement. No one came forward in opposition of the abatement, and no written requests or opposition was received by the city. Following that public hearing, the City of Rice unanimously approved the resolution granting up to two hundred thousand of of property tax abatement to Performance Food Group, and this is over fifteen years, again, same explanation there for Phase One and Phase Two. The abatement agreement will be negotiated with the developer and delivered to the City Council for final improvement, a final approval following the expansion decision by the developer. So the abatement resolution that you're considering this morning is really, the the final decision will still need to be made by by the developer. So today, we're holding a public hearing, and then following the public hearing, the board is asked to consider that resolution granting up to four hundred thousand dollars in property tax abatement, up to fifteen years for Performance Food Group. And Ellers has been retained to review the company's financial information, which you have that summary in your packet. Jason from Ellers is also here, if you have any specific questions regarding that memo. Gina, our attorney with Kennedy and Graven, has been retained to perform all the legal work for the drafting the resolutions and public hearing notices and the development agreement. It's just it's swifter to to do it all in one unless the county board agrees otherwise. And and Gina is also doing the legal work for the city, so it's just it's a it's a smooth transaction that way. We are facilitating the process on behalf of the city and and so I just just a couple of things. Lloyd Hannel is here, he's the General Manager from Performance Food Group. He's going to present the slides for you this this morning, following opening up the public hearing. And then Chris Lloyd from McGuire Woods Consulting is in attendance as well. He is the consultant that we're working with on this project. So I'll turn it over to Chair Pop.
Okay, so you you want them to present now?
Um, I I would hold, maybe hold the open the public hearing.
Oh, have the public hearing first?
Yeah.
Oh, you want them to present during the public hearing?
I think so.
Okay, is that okay?
That'd be fine.
All right. So the item on our agenda is to hold a public hearing for proposed tax abatement for the Performance Food Group Incorporated in Rice. Before opening the public hearing, then we will hear a staff report, which we've already heard, or do you want them to do that now?
I think Lloyd can come up now and.
Now would be a good time, I would think, to do it.
Yep.
Yep.
This is a public hearing. Open a public hearing.
Do you want to give us a staff report?
Yep.
Before opening the public hearing, we'll do the staff report. Then we'll open the public hearing. Yeah, go ahead.
Introduce myself, I'm Lloyd Hannel, I'm the General Manager of Northland Cheese in in Rice. And thank you for hearing our, taking some time and hearing our consideration of our request for tax abatement on our proposed expansion. Give you a little history of, you know, Northland Performance Food Service, we're located in Rice, Minnesota, since about the mid nineteen seventies. Under various different names, the current owners have purchased us in two thousand and two, and we're part of a larger company called Performance Food Group, which is now the second largest food service company in the United States. Our corporate office is located in Richmond, Virginia, and we're a Fortune two hundred company. You can learn more about our company on our website at pfgc.com, if you're looking to get a little more history on on what we have. We have over a hundred locations throughout the United States, and I'll just show you kind of a quick map of of all our locations. And we have three more locations in Minnesota that that support our Minnesota operations. We operate two business units out of the facility in Rice, a cheese processing facility, and then also a food distribution company. We employ two hundred and sixty-two full-time associates and over two hundred and eighty-five total associates. Our location touches many of our sister operations weekly with products that we process and package in Rice. As you can imagine, there's thousands of restaurants and other traditional customers closed this past year. It's a it's been a kind of a challenging time for our company and our our companies that we support. Nevertheless, we see this as a great opportunity going forward and look forward to a partnership with the City of Rice and Benton County to allow, you know, for a potential expansion of our our project to proceed. Northland is requesting from our corp our corporate office, PFG, to invest about twelve point four million dollars in the in the facility at Rice. Spend on that has broken down into about nine million dollars of building and infrastructure and three point four million dollars in in equipment for processing. I'll kind of review a few slides to show you exactly what's going to be happening at the project if if we get this approved. This is an oversight of our top-down view, and we have, we're going to be tearing down some building, and and it doesn't show real well in here, but there's a little bit lighter gray right right in the center that will be replacing a portion of the building. This is our current, this is our current facility as it sits, and that that is not a CAD-approved drawing, but my Excel skills were tested that day, but as you can see, we have three processing lines that that will currently support our business unit, and the purple would be where we are proposing to tear down some older buildings and and put in a processing and add an additional processing facility into that area. This is just a layout of our current facility with our processing. Again, three lines supporting our our current operation. The yellow will be where our new new operation will will go in. Our plan is to purchase new two new processing lines and then to remove two more locate, two current lines over and have the ability to operate five lines when we get this project completed. Just kind of a quick layout of our of of the new facility. Like I said, two of those lines will be new lines, and then two will be existing. And then our our goal would be is to just add, have the ability to add another another three li, two lines to our to our operation. So that shows you kind of what our our intent is. You know, with this with this tax abatement request, you know, it helps secure the project and make the project financially stronger in the in the long term. It'll allow our company to grow this business segment and maintain our leadership in the cheese category in the throughout our company. This investment with with Northland will increase our processing capacity from fifty to seventy percent, fifty to seventy percent over the course of five years after once it's completed, and we'll add twenty-plus full-time associates to support this increase in in business. It is our goal to use as many local contractors and equipment manufacturers and installers as feasible on the project. We have supported local, you know, local contractors in the on past projects and use them to support our facility with our third-party contractor needs on an ongoing basis. Some of these contractors include Two Rivers Equipment out of Holding Ford, Kifmeyer Plumbing, Little Rock Electric, Collison Stewart for our refrigeration, and Breath Stenzin for fire protection, to name a few. Our operation also partners with local companies, support support our business unit in Rice. These include Minnesota Power and Light, First District Association out of Litchfield, is a large dairy cooperative that we purchase product from. We purchase product from West Rock, formerly Smurfet Stone out of St. Cloud for our corrugated needs. Rambler Trucking, Bemis Trucking, and many more contractors and businesses that we that are local. We're active in the community through support with the local high schools, Feeding America, Rice and Little Falls Food Shelves, Toys for Tots, and other local groups. And, you know, and this new expansion will just will clearly deepen our roots in supporting those those local charities. With your partnership, we'll be able to continue to support these local companies, expand our workforce with good-paying jobs and good benefits, and allow our business to grow in Rice and Benton County well into the future. We believe that with your approval of this abatement, we can secure the support from our corporate leadership and and expand our operation in Rice. And I'd just like to thank you for the time of of hearing this consideration and taking that into consideration.
So any questions for?
One comment or some truly, truly grateful you're buying cheese from First District. I support First District, my milk goes to First District.
And we hope to do some more, because they're they're expanding, they're having a large expansion.
Huge expansion, what, they're going from about five and a half million to seven million pounds a day?
We're hoping to double our our opportunity there, so that again, that'll be a nice support for this local area.
Yep.
Mr. Chair.
Yes, and it was Lloyd, is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay, Lloyd, just a quick question. You talked a little bit peripherally about some of the local businesses you support to help with this project. How about specifically building construction, local crews to do the building materials? With your corporate office being in Virginia, what's the thought process there? I realize you've got some peripheral stuff going on, you've named some electrical places, etc.
So we will, we will typically, and we just had a about a fifteen million fifteen million dollar expansion back in twenty eighteen, and all majority of the contractors were local. We had a national contractor that we hired, but they come in and they'll hire local local contractors. So as an example, Kifmeyer Plumbing did the plumbing, Little Rock Electric did our electrical, Breath, DRSC did some concrete work for us. So we, you know, we have a strong roots belief that we should be using local contractors. There are also going to be the individuals that are going to come in and do our repairs and help us maintain that, so if they have the knowledge of the building and and that operation. So like I said, you know, that'll obviously go out to bid, but they they will be part of the bid process, and and typically, we've seen that they've with our direction at the local businesses, business unit, that we get the the business kind of stays into the local area.
Perfect, thank you.
We appreciate that. Anything, any other questions? Okay, thank you.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
So we'll now open the public hearing. And the applicant has already came to the podium and gave his name and address and what they're seeking. Is there anyone in the audience who wishes to address the county board on this end agenda or online? If so, come to the podium, is there anyone? I don't see anyone wishing to address this. Final call for anyone that wants to address the county board on this issue. Public hearing is now closed. Is there any emails or letters or of communication to be read?
I have not received any.
Okay. Has the department, has your department received any comments from state agencies, cities, townships?
The City of Rice was supportive of the project.
Okay, thank you.
And they passed a resolution.
Any, then there will be no official action, because it's, there was official action with the city, but not the.
But there will be also official action with the county following the public hearing.
Okay. The county board will now have questions of the staff and that. Seeing none, it looks pretty, pretty good. They've been a long, you know, I live up in the Rice area, they've been a longtime supporter of that community, boy, going way back to when they had the little single building there. So. Otherwise, entertain a motion.
Motion to close public hearing.
So I did already.
Motion you're looking for.
A motion to.
That'll be next.
You're right, your next item is the actual resolution.
Okay.
Moving on to your next item, yeah.
All right, then we'll move on to. What's the next item here? Consider resolution to approve the economic development tax abatement for Performance Foods.
I'll move approval of that.
I'll second it.
Motion's been made and seconded to approve the development of an economic development tax abatement for Performance Foods. Any other discussion?
Sounds like a great project.
Yeah, absolutely.
Yep.
This is just another tool for us to use. Commissioner Gopinski and myself have been involved with this with the city for quite a few years. It's a very good tool. And it does help the businesses grow.
We hopefully look forward to seeing you stay.
Yep.
Any other discussion, otherwise, well, Beth, we call the roll.
Commissioner Schlongen.
Aye.
Commissioner Johnson.
Aye.
Commissioner Pop.
Aye.
Commissioner Gopinski.
Aye.
Commissioner Heinan.
Aye.
Carried.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Luck and thank you.
Did you get your parking spot yet?
Not yet, waiting.
Missions. We can make that work amount, if you want. Great River Regional Library.
I see Karen is here from the library.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Nice to see you all.
Yeah, good to see you in person, eh?
Yeah, nice to see you in real life. Good morning, I am Karen Punsek, I'm the Executive Director for Great River Regional Library. I have with me Shelley Cowes, who is also the Library Services Coordinator in Foley and Clearwater, and we're here to just share some highlights about the library system and give you some background in what we did in 2020. In your packet, you will have just a real brief impact report of the stats from Great River Regional Library. I have no doubt you can read through those numbers and see that even though we were closed for a part of the year last year, we still had a pretty substantial impact in terms of the numbers. For those of you who are new to the county board, it's nice to meet you and welcome aboard. I look forward to working with you a little more closely in the next few years. This is the type of presentation we do at the beginning of every year. We try to get to all six counties that are part of our partnership to just give you an overview of what we did. And Great River is in Todd, Morrison, Sherburne, Wright, and Benton Counties, and we have thirty-two libraries in across those counties in addition to the GRRL to-go locker system in the City of Sartell. From a patron perspective, everyone is a Great River patron, and you can use your card at any of those locations. So you can see the borrower numbers by county that are reflected there. Those are just a measure of the people who have a card that have used it at least once in the last three years to check out books, borrow ebooks, or use the public computers. There's a lot of services that we offer that don't require a library card, so it's just one number, but it gives you an idea of how far that reach is across the six-county area. In Benton County, our residents primarily use the St. Cloud Public Library, which is not only the largest library in our system, but one of the largest public libraries in the state of Minnesota, so we're very proud to have that as a resource for the entire region. Foley is the one library that's physically located in Benton County, but we also have. Foley is the one library that's physically located in Benton County, but we also have a lot of particularly Rice residents using the Royalton Library, which is in Morrison County. So patrons regularly cross county lines to use services. Last year, digital library took center stage, especially after the shutdown in March. We saw an eighteen percent increase in digital activity alone last year, and we continue to see that sustained. Part of that was a shift in how we were actually spending money because we weren't even able to purchase regular books for a point in time last year, partly because of shipping, partly because of delays in publication. So it just wasn't available for us to purchase. In terms of other services that we offered, we launched a new service called Hoopla, which is a digital library service as well, but it allows residents to stream content from home using their library card. We also made it easier to get an e-card, so you can go to griver.co.org and sign up for a library card online without even coming into the building. So that was a really great next step for us in terms of offering library service. And we also have city partners across the region. So all of the buildings are owned by the cities that we occupy. So in particular Foley, we are in a shared building with the city administration center, and we worked with them through the closure to figure out what we should do in terms of offering services. And Shelley will tell you a little bit how that played out at the local level, but one of the first steps we did was expand the Wi-Fi signal outside the buildings even when we were closed. So there's a twenty-four-seven access point right in Foley. You can use it from the street if you need to. And that's something that we worked with the city to make sure it was okay to do. The other thing we also did was start circulating Wi-Fi hotspots. And that was really a pilot project in peers when we started the pandemic, but now it is in almost half the libraries, including Foley. One story I'd like to share with you before I turn the mic over to Shelley is one that just came in recently from a patron. People have been really grateful for the services, and especially the people who have been stuck at home and doing distance learning. And this is just a reflection of people like Shelley who, who staff the front desk every day. We use the library a lot due to having health issues that keep us close to home. Times are trying for many, but the library and the workers do so much for our family. We are grateful for everything that they do. We need something ordered, or we can't find what we need, they will get it for us. And they greet us with a friendly smile and a hey, how are you when we come in. We are very grateful for everything they do for us and for our community. And I just want you to know that our frontline staff are amazing. They got us through a really tough spot, and Foley was one of the first places to launch the curbside services, not only in our region, but in the state of Minnesota. So I'd like Shelley to share a little bit about her successes from last year.
Good morning, commissioners, it's nice to meet you.
Good morning.
My name is Shelley. And I, of course, handle Foley and Clearwater now. I have been doing this job for just a little over a year. To give you a brief history of what's happened this last year, exactly one year ago today, on March sixteenth, the library's closed. All Great River libraries closed under the governor's order. Within a week, Great River was trying to find a way to safely reopen. After looking at business models and surrounding area, in the surrounding area mitigation strategies, Great River decided the best way forward was curbside service. Foley had been offering curbside service for those people in the community that had limited mobility already. We would bring their items out to their car, and we have an alley access that was perfect for this situation. So Foley offered to be part of the pilot program. Having staff willing to come to work in these conditions was only part of that equation, as Karen had explained. We needed a city that was willing to work with us. So us who just sent out to all the cities, and the city of Foley responded immediately with an enthusiastic yes. On April sixth, just three weeks after the shutdown, Foley offered contactless curbside service two days a week. At first, we started with the patron request that were sitting on the shelves when we closed. And I can honestly say I wasn't sure what the response was going to be. I didn't know if people would be willing to come out. But within the first week, nearly everything that we had been wait, had waiting was picked up, and patrons were ordering more. So on May, in May, beginning of May, when all thirty-two libraries started offering curbside service, we went to five days a week. It was uplifting to see how happy people were to have this service. People would call and ask if we could pick out just ten books for their children because they missed the library so much. And they called these surprise bags, and they were very happy to have them. One of the greatest concerns to parents that I was speaking to during this time was the internet access for their children for distance learning. There are a lot of pockets in Benton County that have expensive or very slow internet access, and we knew that that was our next priority. Great River had offered to supply hardware, as Karen had explained, for expanding the Wi-Fi in the building. There is now street access. The city was willing to work with us. Great River supplies the hardware, but the city of Foley ran all the wiring, which was basically from the back of the building to the front. This was a help, but parents were still struggling with teaching their children in the car. Our next step was to open the library for computer appointments that began on June twenty-third in Foley. After one week of appointments, Foley offered a walk-in computer use if a station was available. The summer brought browsing appointments on July first, and when building capacity expanded, we opened the building basically for business as usual. In anticipation of the continuing distance learning, Foley introduced the Wi-Fi to-go hotspots. In the summer, there are five of them, and they are checked out on a regular basis. It's a one-week checkout with unlimited data. We have several families who rely on these for distance learning, and they have been extremely grateful. All the dates and the reopening steps are only part of the story. The staff in Foley has made the extra effort to create a little bit of normal in current conditions. We are offering make and takes and scavenger hunts in the library because we can't offer programming right now. And during the summer, we've done story strolls in the park. Patrons have been coming in for assistance with learning how to attend Zoom meetings and using ebooks. In fact, one patron who needed to use Zoom to attend a court proceeding in Florida successfully did that with our help the other day. We are helping people tackle the technologies that they need to cope in a socially-distanced world, and I think we have succeeded in creating an environment that feels both safe and welcoming despite the physical barriers. And I wanted to thank the county for continuing to support us, and if there are any questions, we're very happy to answer.
Any questions, comments? Anything? I'd just like to, to say that I do see us sitting on the library board that the cities, most of the cities that we are in, the cities and the libraries work very well together. I guess that part really impresses me when you, when you hear different things. To say, you know, Foley's not the only city that has done things for the library that they probably wouldn't have had to do.
We got a similar response from Clearwater. They were willing to do curbside service right away, and they expanded Wi-Fi.
Great. Thank you, Shelley.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next up will be Troy Heck, the sheriff.
Mr. Chair, at this time, I will be stepping away.
Okay.
This issue.
All right.
Morning, commissioners.
Morning.
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 So we're here today to reconsider the request to approve a mutual aid agreement with the city of Minneapolis to send peace officers down to assist with what they've dubbed Operation Safety Net. The goal of Operation Safety Net, just to recap, is to keep peace and, and dispel civil unrest in the wake of the George Floyd Derek Chauvin trial. At the last meeting, it was the wishes of the board to table this so that they would have more time to consider some of the particular, some of the particular details of this request. We were asked, staff was asked to gather information regarding what I could categorize as logistic and legal concerns that were brought up at our discussion. Now, as was mentioned in the open forum by, by Mike Lewandowski, Minneapolis political leaders continue to make it very difficult to be their ally with some of the decisions and the statements that they have made. And I can certainly understand the hesitancy of board members, and I completely understand the concerns that citizens have when you look at some of these decisions and some of these statements that they've made. Like I said, they make it very hard to be their ally. I certainly don't bring this request to the board because I, well, I bring it in spite of these things because I know that in spite of all the things that are said and done by the Minneapolis City Council, there are peace officers wearing the badge down there in Minneapolis that will be doing their level best to ensure that peace is maintained and that property is protected and lives are kept secure. And those peace officers are asking for our help, not just our help, but help statewide. And that, that's one of the things we do as law enforcement. We go and we help our brothers and sisters. Following the meeting two weeks ago, I took about to try to address some of the logistic concerns and questions that the board had. The first was a question of what other agencies in the area were doing in response to requests from Operation Safety Net. So I asked all the four surrounding sheriffs and the police chiefs of Benton County, in addition to the police chiefs in the Saint Cloud metro area, whether their departments were sending any officers on a proactive basis down to Minneapolis to assist with Operation Safety Net. And in short, the answer I got back was no. Some of these agencies cited staffing levels as a reason that they were unable to send people. Some agencies cited the concern for unrest in the Saint Cloud area. Several of the agencies did say that even though they weren't planning on sending anyone proactively, they would consider sending staff down to Minneapolis should we see the situation to evolve into something similar to what happened in last May where it was an emergency situation and help was desperately needed. With that, I reached out a little farther to find out, well, if, if no one from our area is sending people down, I wanted to know who is contributing at this point to Operation Safety Net. So I asked that question of the Minnesota Sheriff's Association representation, and I was, I learned that representation for sheriff's office supporting Operation Safety Net in the seven-county metro area is very strong. But once you get outside that seven-county metro area, that strong, that, that support is much more limited. There are only a handful of counties outside the seven-county metro area that are contributing to Operation Safety Net. I also looked into a little deeper, some of the details of what any staff we send down there might be asked to do. And I was given assurances that our staff under the Operation Safety Net plans would be placed in property protection details, so they would be sent to places like the Hennepin County Government Center, the Hennepin County Jail, and other government buildings and infrastructure that are considered to be at risk. The purpose for that is staff from outside is sent to those details so that the staff that would normally be protecting those buildings could be sent out to the teams that are actually going to be addressing people that are engaging in criminal activity and in, in inciting civil unrest. I was also assured that there are secure locations that our vehicles would be kept and stored, thereby minimizing the risk that they might incur damage, and that our staff would be operated under the command of Hennepin County Sheriff's Office personnel, and rather than operating under the command of the Minneapolis Police Department personnel. Under the legal aspects, Assistant County Attorney Michelle Meyer generated a very thorough memo that talks about the differences between providing mutual aid under a mutual aid agreement and providing mutual aid under the state statutes that address this. Under, there's two situations in which you provide a mutual aid as a law enforcement agency. One is just under the state statute, one is under a mutual aid agreement. The situation between both of them are identical when it comes to damaged property under both the state statute and pretty much all mutual aid agreements. The sending agency is responsible for damage to their property. The same goes for work comp. Under both these paradigms, the sending agency is still expected to take up the liability for any work comp issues. The real difference here, the real, one of the reasons why these mutual aid agreements exist is tort liability for any suits that may be brought against the county. If you're responding under a mutual aid agreement, such as the one that's being proposed that has an indemnification clause, then the receiving agency is one responsible for the tort liability. The receiving agency is agreeing to indemnify the responding, the sending agency, thereby limiting the liability exposure to one single entity, removing Benton County's liability, and also limiting the ability of a plaintiff to only seek one statutory tort limit. If we respond without a mutual aid agreement, that indemnification is not there, which would mean that if something were to happen and our staff and in Benton County were sued for something that our staff did, not only could a plaintiff sue the receiving agency, Minneapolis in this case, but they could also sue Benton County. And we would, we would need to defend ourselves, and we would also be subject to potential tort limits in a suit under law. So a plaintiff could, could double their potential windfall or, or triple depending on how many agencies there are. And under, under the statute, there is one other, there's one other asterisk. So in a situation where there's an actual declared state of emergency, then under that declared state of emergency, it would revert back to a situation where we would be indemnified. But again, that, that would require an official down there to actually declare a state of emergency. That would be different than us going down and helping out with what we might perceive as an emergency, but that, what was not officially declared an emergency. So those, I believe, are the--
Sorry, voice from the sky.
Okay.
I just wanted to clarify under Chapter Twelve, you have a declared emergency, but then you can also have a mutual aid request from a political subdivision. And in that situation, too, you would have some protection under the tort liability. So if a political subdivision requests assistance under Chapter Twelve without an agreement, you would still have some protection under the tort liability aspect. I just wanted to clarify that.
Good. Thank you, Michelle.
Thanks.
Mr. Chair.
Yes.
Sheriff for Michelle, I'm not sure who would answer this. Without the mutual aid agreement in place, if the board or county chooses not to go that route, I understand, is it still your office, sheriff, that would make a decision whether or not you were going to go if requested?
Correct, yep. The decision before the board is simply whether or not we're going to enter into this mutual aid agreement.
Okay, so i- if, if Hennepin County or Minneapolis Police Department requested you specifically as a sheriff of Benton County to send aid without a mutual aid agreement, that decision's yours to send deputies down or not?
Correct, yep. The sheriff maintains the authority to send his staff, you know, at, at my purview.
Okay, thank you.
Yep.
Mr. Chair. Sheriff, is that on an emergency standpoint, or is that, or could that be acted on, on what we're dealing with today? So, so either we could, I guess I'll clarify, we could enter into this agreement, and then you have direction from us, or if it was a emergency side where you don't have time to come in front of the board, that's when you would act?
Correct, yes.
Okay.
Any other comments or questions?
Mr. Chair?
Yeah.
Mr. Heck, you know that I support the Sheriff's Department immensely, and I appreciate everything you guys do for us, the community, our fire departments, everything. I have a real problem supporting a proactive approach from Benton County when their own leaders down in Minneapolis don't support a proactive approach. One of the comments from a Mr. Jeremiah Ellison is basically said, "I have been a little bit disappointed with the heavy city and police focus of this plan." That really hits home on, that was right in Star Tribune. He, he's a councilman for the city of Minneapolis. I a hundred percent agree, if it becomes an emergency like the other counties and police chiefs have said, sending people down, but I, I just have a hard time supporting a proactive approach at this point. Yep, I'll echo those comments and add something else, that this has probably been the hottest subject that I've had in my six years on the county board. I mean, I have had no support for this whatsoever from, you know, and I haven't talked to, you know, fellow law enforcement agencies, but I think that it would be, it would have to be a real devastating emergency before Benton County should get any involvement at all, because I think the public--
because I think the public definitely would not support that. They want, you know, and maybe we've seen it differently out here than they do closer to the metro, but they want no support for what Minneapolis did in May or what they're going to do now. And so I, because of all the comments, I've had negative comments, I cannot support this. So is there any other comments?
I'd just like to say, I completely understand, again, your sentiments, I completely understand the sentiments of the public and those who have voiced concern, as I said, Minneapolis makes it very difficult to be their ally. And I appreciate your input and coming to a good decision for Benton County together as a team.
Right. So we don't need action if we're not going to support it, I take it? Or do you want it up or down, either way?
I think that's up to the board to decide, I guess if there's no motion to-
Correct, if there's no motion, then there's no action, right?
Pardon my, Monty?
Right, you don't have to do a motion to deny it.
Okay.
There's-
No motion at all?
Yeah.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Sheriff Heck, and I want to reiterate, if it becomes an emergency down there, I think at that point, this can be relooked at and you have the ability, obviously it did become an emergency last year, so it just, the proactive approach is what I can support. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right.
All right. Thank you, Commissioners.
Thank you, Sheriff.
George is up next.
I'm back.
You want to do the sheer screen thing with the George? Once you go there, go ahead and find what you got there.
He's trying to find it.
Let's see here. Let's just minimize this for a second.
Sure. Come in. Why don't you try, hold on, and reinstall it one more time.
Three-minute recess.
There.
Right after this or right now?
Right now, while they're getting prepared.
Okay, while they're getting prepared, we're going to take a three-minute recess.
Three-minute recess. Well, that's pressure, three minutes. And you can just use this to advance. There you go, okay, you're all set. You're all set.
Commissioner Segal, what was the question again?
Was there anything on that consent agenda that was set aside for discussion?
No, no. All the items were approved as presented.
Okay.
If you've got any questions, please stop me, okay? Just a little bit about myself. I grew up in Stearns County on a small dairy farm, went to St. Cloud State University, went to the United States Air Force, spent 30 years in the Air Force, and I retired as a full Colonel out of the Air Force. My whole life has been government service, after that, retired, came back to Minnesota. I worked for St. Cloud State University for about a year and then I stumbled upon this job. I'm also on committees at Stearns County, and I'm a Rock Lake Township Supervisor and Chair. So that's a little bit of background about me. So what's a county veteran service officer? And I'm doing this because we have three new board members here and I wanted to give kind of an overview of it. So it's by state statute, 1943, every county has to employ one of us. Here in Benton County, I'm part-time, 32 hours a week, and near the end of my presentation, I'll compare and contrast that to some of the other counties. Certification training, we're required to have a minimum 32 hours a year in certification and training, and the trainers are primarily what you see there, Minnesota Department of Veterans Affairs, NACVSO, National Veterans Legal Services, and the Minnesota Association of County Veteran Service Officers. And there's others that train us on a case-by-case basis, some nonprofits do training for us. So I'm certified and accredited with all these organizations, and I'm not going to read them to you, you can look at them, but some of them you're probably familiar with, American Legion and the DAV. The last one at the bottom, the VA Veterans Administration, I am on the federal website, my name is listed as a certified county veteran service officer. What's the role of a county veteran service officer? We deal a lot with Veterans Administration, Department of Veterans Affairs for benefits, nonprofit organizations, and out-of-state agencies. We're the one stop for veterans to come to, to talk about benefits, to help them solve problems, to mentor them, to advise them, counsel them, or direct them to where they can get services. That's my mission statement. I listen, mentor, counsel, advise, and help prepare documents. These are some of the services provided. I get a lot of requests for, "I want my separation papers." It's called a D form 214. So someone will come in and I'll help them get that. We order from the National Archives, sometimes it's recorded in Benton County, sometimes it's recorded in another county. We have the capability now, I can go online to any county in Minnesota and get a separation paper on the military person. Oh.
Oh. Oh.
So you hear this question a lot, what is a veteran? And if you look at it, there's really not any strict definition of a veteran. It depends on what laws the Congress have passed throughout the years. So it depends when people went in, when they got out, what era they're in, and I'll have a slide on that. For Minnesota, Minnesota does have a definition of a veteran. You have to have continuous active duty time. Active duty time is opposed to training time, at least 191 days, to be eligible for most Minnesota veteran benefits. Most common definition of a veteran you hear, it's someone who served and has active duty time. And on that bottom part there, you're familiar with Army, Navy, Air Force, Marines, and Coast Guard, but there's also the National Oceanic and Atmospheric Administration is considered a veteran, and Environmental Services and Public Health people. These are kind of a laundry list of the veterans' benefits at the federal level. And that big arrow, red arrow I have there is disability compensation, and that's the one I deal mostly with because it involves money. People can get money based on when they file for disability compensation. And it impacts the county, and I have some figures later on here. So the short answer to every question about, "Am I eligible?", depends, again, depends on your age, were you a GARDER, Reserve, were you active duty, were you in peacetime, wartime. So we've got to discern all that when somebody comes in, get their separation papers. Periods of war, this is important. If you're in a period of war, certain benefits are available to you as opposed to peacetime. We're still in the Gulf War era. It's still going on. So started 1990, and at some point in time, the federal government, the president and administration is going to determine when that ends. This is just a quick snapshot, the darker the color here, the more veterans there are in that state. You can see they kind of like to congregate around the coasts. I don't know, maybe it's the good weather as opposed to Minnesota. Federal dollars to Minnesota, this is some fiscal year 2019, the veteran population about 380,000. Expenditures, over $3 billion. Expenditures in the bottom, you see, includes medical care, compensation, pension, construction, like construction at the VA Medical Center here. So there's a lot of dollars coming in here. Benton County, our veteran population is estimated to be about 3,300. Nobody knows for sure what it is, and VA doesn't estimate on that. Now, what that doesn't include when that 3,300 is, when a veteran passes away, I deal with the widows. So those figures are not taken into account here. So it's far more than 3,300. I have 7,700 records in my database. Now, some of them have passed away, but it's more than 3,300. Expenditures, about in Benton County, about $35 million. Of that, $12,442,000 is compensation and pension. That means veterans getting money every month, getting that money and spending it. Cars, grocery store, gas, hardware store, whatever. So that's federal money coming into Benton County. Different parts of the VA, there's a health administration, there's burial and cemetery, there's a debt management center, Board of Veterans Appeals and Benefits and Services. I had a bunch of slides to go through each one of these, but I'm not going to do that, so I'm going to save you. The VA is not part of the Department of Defense, I get that question all the time. And I also get the question, people call me and say, "Is this the VA?" No, this is not the VA, this is Benton County. So again, the Veterans Benefit Administration is the one that offers all these benefits, and the one I have highlighted, compensation, that's the one, like I said, gets to that over $12 million. People come in, they want to file a claim, we call it a claim for a service-connected issue, something medically that happened to them when they were in the military. The most common claim I help veterans with is hearing loss and ringing in the ears, by far. And that's all across the United States, the same thing. So the VA rates these compensation claims in 10% increments, you never see a 15 or 25. And so typically, a veteran will come in, a younger veteran, they'll be rated at 10% for hearing loss, and that's equates to about $145 a month, tax-free, both federal and state. That rating, those ratings go obviously all the way up to 100%. Somebody getting 100% gets about $3,300 a month from the VA, tax-free. So it's quite a bit more than 3,300. Again, we call these things we do, claims, and just to give you insight here, the claim backlog in the United States, there's about 474,000 claims waiting to be worked. So the VA is not very efficient in what they do, and the COVID-19 has slowed it up even more. Of that number, there's about 211,000 waiting over 125 days. The average days to complete a claim, when somebody comes in and I fill out the paperwork for a hearing loss claim, and we send it in, it's about 118 days for that to be adjudicated by the VA. The appeals are not countering this. Now, an appeal is when the claim comes back from the VA with a decision and says, "Denied" for whatever reason, the veteran has the opportunity to appeal it. And the way you appeal it is you provide some kind of medical justification from a medical doctor back to the VA, and it can go to the Board of Veterans Appeals. So there's about 88,000 appeals waiting, and the wait time for those, you can see, the one at the bottom for a hearing means that the veteran will be in a teleconference with a judge from Washington DC. Sometimes I'll be there and sometimes their power of attorney, like the American Legion or the DAV, will sit there with him and talk to a judge. It's not like a hearing in a courtroom, it's very conversational. And so if you have a hearing, the average days to get a response back is about 383 days. And sometimes veterans die, the older veterans, it just takes too long. Now, I'm going to switch over to the Department of Veterans Affairs. They have a lot of benefits for veterans, really more than a lot of other states do. And the Minnesota Department of Affairs, I think their budget is about $140 million. And these are some of the programs that they have. There's a subsistence program, if you're auto-work temporarily disabled, Minnesota Department of Veterans Affairs will pay you subsistence. They'll pay your rent or a house payment and pay you a monthly stipend to help you. Dental and optical, all these programs, by the way, are means tested. The dental and optical, I have a lot of, widows are eligible for this too, where once a year, you can get $1,000 towards routine dental care, you can get $400 towards optical care. You've got to apply for it, you've got to provide bank statements, a budget to the state of Minnesota, they want to know financially where you stand. There's a special needs grant that you can apply for, there's really no dollar limit to it. It's on a case-by-case basis, they can do it once in a lifetime. I've had a lot of people submit for this for their heating system went out, their air conditioning went out, they need a new roof put on. I've had some of these for widows that went as high as $20,000 I got from the state of Minnesota to help fix their house. There's an education assistance program. Education assistance for surviving spouses and dependents. This has to do with a veteran that passed away or died due to active duty. There's a disaster relief program if it's declared by the governor. And these are some of the other things, parking pass, hunting and fishing, property tax reduction and elimination is a big one, I know you don't like that, but the veterans like it. So if you're 70% rated by the VA, you get $150,000 property tax excluded. If you're 100% rated by the VA, 100% rated permanent and total, meaning that rating will never change again, you get $350,000 property tax excluded. So that pretty well wipes everybody's, in that case, their property tax that they have to pay in. Again, Mike doesn't like that either, but-
I didn't say that.
Well, you were thinking it. There's vet out of place, life complaints, and there's employment preferences. So just to wrap this part up, there's a lot of moving parts in the VA, there's thousands and thousands of forms to fill out. The instructions for some of this stuff is, just instructions are five or six pages long before you get to the two-page form you've got to fill out. So it's hard for people to navigate these things, and that's why I exist, that's why they come in and I help them with that. Okay, now I'm going to turn to, Monty and I decided back in November, and I had been thinking about this too, maybe it'd be a good idea if I took a look at some other counties just to see how they operate compared to how we operate here. And so I did a nine-question survey with all these counties, and three of them didn't respond, but that tells you something in and of itself. Anyway, so those are the counties I looked at. And so there's a matrix in your hand out there that you have, if you want to go through it, you probably don't, but that's why I'm summarizing it. So if you look at it, overall, most of the offices operate nearly the same way with a few differences. Some of the noteworthy items are, we have the least amount of staffing to support the number of estimated veterans. And so if I look at, if you look at the matrix, Meeker County has a veteran population of about 1,642 veterans, they have a full-time county veteran service officer and a full-time administrative person to support that. Most of the county veteran service officers operate in a separate department organized under the county administrator like we are. Some of them are organized under human services, which by statute is incorrect. Some county veteran service offices, they manage transportation programs with vans and part-time drivers. And all of them use three software programs to manage the veteran population. And I just switched over- And I just switched over from what was called VIMS to VetPro back probably seven months ago, and it's working out really good. Some counties have veterans courts, we don't have a veteran court, Stearns County does. Some counties operate satellite office because, you know, they have two county veteran service officers. So in any particular day, one of the county veteran service officers will go out to some other community in the county and have an office open, some open hours there. I was going to do this about five years ago in Suck Rapids and the, the demand just wasn't there. Pe- people don't have a big deal in driving to here to Foley. I mean, highway twenty-three is good, so there's no sense in me going somewhere and just sitting and twirling my thumbs. Most of the county veteran service officers use, we get a grant from the state of Minnesota, it, it depends on your veteran population. Here in Benton County, we get a ten thousand dollar grant from the state of Minnesota every year to help us operate our county veteran service program. Almost all the counties use it about the same way. It, it's, it's kind of fenced money, there's a matrix you get from the state of Minnesota, you have to spend it on these kinds of things. Advertising, outreach, radio, billboard, newspapers, I do newspapers, I do billboards, uh, there should be one up here in a couple of weeks. I was on the radio last week, you maybe heard me. So the thing I would ask of you folks is when you're out and about and you meet veterans, tell them to come see me. That's, that's the only thing I ask of you, tell them to come see me. Uh, so summary of this survey we did, just based on staffing alone, I think Benton County operates more efficiently. Now, obviously I'm biased because I'm the guy who runs it, right? There might be some specific day-to-day nuances and, and I'll probably go out to some of these county veteran service offices once this COVID stuff has ended. I mean, you can't go to Stearns County now because they're still closed. I don't know what the other county, but I, but I, I plan on doing that. So I've been here about eight years and based on, uh, being here, I've only had two veterans with complaints in eight years. And I, I survey every veteran that comes and assists on, I give them a little sheet to rate my service. And like I said, I've only had two dissatisfied and they, they were only dissatisfied because the VA didn't give them what they thought they should have. Those counties that have a vet- veteran transportation program, it might be nice to have, but it's, in my opinion, for us, it's unnecessary. It's a nice to have, I mean, you got to buy a van, you got to get drivers, you got to pay them per diem, you got to keep track of all that stuff. And I probably get a request for transportation maybe once every two or three months, somebody will call me. Questions?
Any questions, comments? On the transportation one, you know, we have multiple ways to transfer. Is there any way that veteran, if you do get one, that you can put it towards, what is it, TRICAP or some of them other ones?
Yeah, that's why I, that's what I tell them, I say, call TRICAP or call CARE. CARE does transportation every once in a while too. And the VA provides transportation for veterans that have appointments to the St. Cloud VA Medical Center if they call soon enough. If they call the day of or day before, it's too late.
Can you take any funds and put, like, say, TRICAP, can you put any funds towards the veteran that needs a ride or not?
Uh, I could, yeah, with that grant money, yeah, that would be something I could do.
The other question I had on the grant money is that, you know, I, I listen a lot to Twins games and Morrison County Veteran Services.
Yeah.
Is always supporting that they are on there every game there is, is that part of their ten thousand dollars?
Yes, it is, yeah, Kathy does that all the time and she's, she's very savvy in media kind of stuff.
I always wondered about that because you hear it every, every game they're on there, you know, Morrison County Veteran Services.
That's what she uses part of her money for.
Okay.
George, I'm not afraid to admit I'm learning yet, are you a county employee or are we backed up through the state?
No, no, I'm, I'm county, that statute says every county has to hire at least one county veteran service officer. You know, big counties like Henning County, they have twenty-five county veteran service officers.
All right.
So yeah, uh, although I, I live in Stearns County, I love working in Benton County.
Okay, thank you.
You just lives across the river too.
Yeah, I do.
George, thank you for the detailed presentation, it made me, made me aware of a lot of things that you do. And I appreciate all the work that you do for our love outside there.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you for the comments.
Been very well organized, obviously.
I think we get a lot of bang for our buck.
We, we do, yeah, I really do.
I appreciate it, thank you.
Do you need a parking spot too?
Well, I, I could, I could use yours down there if you were not here maybe.
So moved.
We can put slash CBSO.
Thanks, George, thank you.
Pretty soon they'll be.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thanks, George. For those of you that don't know, George is also on the Great River Regional Library as a Stearns County citizen.
Oh, thanks, thank you.
Thank you.
Um, next we'll have Mike Harvey, Land Services Director.
Good morning, Commissioners.
Morning.
Still morning, right?
Yep.
Okay, it's still morning. Um, I just want to give a little honor to George too, I work with him. And I was working him, with him, the moment I walked in the door, we, we shared information to help our veterans too with them, so, but he does an excellent job. You know, I'm just here for a, uh, an upgrade to our Beacon software. If you might recall, I was before this board, two and a half months ago, uh, probably right before the beginning of January, maybe the end of the year, right before Christmas. And, uh, we got our new Beacon contract signed for three years. And since then, along with myself, some other counties in the state have worked with this vendor to kind of improve their software, to provide us better service. And the end goal here is to take our antiquated software and make it more useful in a visual format for our tool, for our, um, staff and for the public. So, um, the, these two contracts are, one is going to give us some GIS layers through our Beacon product, those are internal only. Um, the second enhancement is also an internal only enhancement. And what it's going to do is allow us to provide better service to the public when they call us. Um, they can see everything in one page, uh, my staff can when we get a call for the local boards of appeal and the county boards of appeal. So this is very timely for us. Our proposed notices are slated to go out, uh, before the twenty-sixth of this month. And those will be in the mail and then, uh, we will have our local board phone calls coming in. And then they will have all that information on one screen, uh, highlighting the changes from last year's, uh, cards to this year. So basically any changes on the property from last year to this year will be available on one screen for my staff to look at instead of hopping between two or three different programs. Um, the other one is just a, a matter of getting our property assessments more equalized because we deal with a lot of local assessors and we don't have full control over the information. The only way to identify some of those disequalizations or, uh, maybe inequities, uh, which there always are some in the system. Um, but in order to get rid of those, you got to really look at your data in a visual format every year. And we did not have that ability since I started here. So it's just kind of moving ahead with modern technology and finding a way to take our old technology and make it more useful in a new format.
Okay, questions?
Mr. Chair. So it seems like every two to three months, you're coming in front of us for more upgrades for an old system that is not working properly. And these are just Band-Aids, correct?
I would say that this one, you could call it a Band-Aid, but it really depends on what kind of integration we're going to have with new software as well. Um, but yes, I, I would say some of this is a Band-Aid. The other thing I'd like to mention is that Beacon is our GIS provider, we don't have an internal GIS, uh, I mean, we have a GIS employee, but we don't have a GIS provider. Somebody who's taking our data and, um, and throwing it onto a, it's basically a subscription service, right? It's, we're paying to use it and then the public is paying to use it. And the, and the, um, the costs that we receive then pay for the enhancements. And so this is a way of giving back to our taxpayers, uh, through better information. Then, I don't know if I fully answered your point there, but it's, it's a way to use the technology we have now to provide better service now.
May- maybe another way to ask the question is, is it, let's just say went to a new KAMA system, would it have, would that new KAMA system have this functionality built into it? Or would we need to, still need to buy this regardless?
So the new vendor will definitely have an immense number of capabilities that our current vendor doesn't have. How we use those capabilities still have, there's a cost, right? There's a cost to use things, um, and build integrations between third-party vendors. So I don't think we're going to just go away from using this GI, GIS vendor right away. I think what we're going to do is look at what do we need to keep paying for with this vendor versus what should we be paying for with our tax and KAMA products separately? So we'll kind of have to look at the two together. And I think I even put that on the bottom of this, uh, agenda item. I've informed the vendor that a new tax KAMA system will compete for resources and that they need to stay competitive as we will incorporate all available software into the most efficient platform for all parties. That's our goal. And we do have the, um, I just want to make this, we, we have a fund available for this, it's not touching levy dollars. And we're really just giving back to the public what they've given to us to support this software. So I think this is a good use of resources. Thank you, Steve.
No, thank you for clarification.
Any, anybody else have?
Mr. Chair, just a quick question, I'd like to expound on that, non-levy dollars, assessors' web subscription service fund, what does that mean?
So the service that we have is supported by users.
Okay.
They pay to access our data and easily, we're paying for software, they're paying for software. So we have a cost to pay for that software, which is ten thousand eighty dollars a year. After this, it'll be closer to twelve hundred dollars a, or sorry, twelve thousand dollars a year. We bring in about, I want to say somewhere between eleven and thirteen thousand dollars of that a year, probably a little bit more in some, a little less than others. So we're just getting it back to where that cost equals the value we're providing.
Okay, thank you.
So it's virtually a neutral position.
It is, and we have a three-year reserve in that fund. So I think it's okay to spend a little bit of that down and give it back in ways that would benefit our office and the public.
Yeah.
Yep. Okay.
I would move approval of these, uh, software upgrades. Do we need to take them individually or not?
There is two separate contracts, I don't know the formality. Monty, could you help me?
I probably would.
I would say, yeah, you have a, have a motion on, on each one, sure.
Okay, so you want to do?
I'll do a motion on the first contract with, it doesn't have a name here.
This would be the GIS layers.
Okay, okay, uh, contract with the GIS.
I'll second that.
Okay, motion's been made and seconded with the GIS layers to our Beacon system. Any other discussion? Hearing none, Beth, call the roll.
Commissioner Schlangen.
Aye.
Commissioner Johnson.
Aye.
Commissioner Pop.
Aye.
Commissioner Kapinski.
Aye.
Commissioner Heinon.
Aye.
Okay, and then we need one more motion here.
I'll make a motion to approve the contract dated January fourth with Q public, the, the program changes, highlighting yearly changes for KAMA.
I'll second.
Motion's been seconded to approve the Q, Q public to KAMA. Any other discussion? Hearing none, Beth, would you call the roll?
Commissioner Schlangen.
Aye.
Commissioner Johnson.
Aye.
Commissioner Pop.
Aye.
Commissioner Kapinski.
Aye.
Commissioner Heinon.
Carrie. Thanks, Mike.
Thank you very much for your time.
Next we'll have Chris Bird.
All right. Good morning, Commissioners.
Morning.
Morning.
Let's see here, if you'll allow me a moment here, I like to bring stuff up on the screen as well. If I can. There we go. All right. Okay. And now I probably need to go back and go back to this and make sure I'm sharing my screen for everybody.
Yeah, there you go.
All right, here we go. All right, the first item that I bring for you is discussion about, uh, purchasing maintenance equipment in this calendar year, two thousand and twenty-one. Um, last, uh, uh, fall, when we were approving the budget, there was a request for equipment. Um, and so what we're bringing forward today is not, was not approved, so that's why I'm bringing it forward, is this, this would be additional purchases. The first piece of equipment, uh, is on the screen here. This is a crack filler, uh, melter, uh, machine. We own one that has been kind of a lemon of a machine, uh, to put it, put it bluntly. Um, uh, we've not had good success with it, we have not been able to keep it running for an entire shift. And so last year, we made the decision to, to rent a piece of equipment. And so we've had very good luck with this, we've been very productive with this machine. Our, uh, staff enjoys looking, uh, working with it because it doesn't need constant maintenance or constant tinkering to keep it running. And so we would like to purchase this machine outright and not continue to rent it. Uh, we worked with a vendor, uh, here in St. Cloud, uh, to rent this machine. And so I'm requesting to purchase this outright. Um, they, working with them, they have been kind enough to allow whatever we've been paid in rent to go towards the purchase price. So to purchase the remainder of this machine, so minus anything that we've already paid in rental, I have it here, would be twenty-two thousand, one hundred and twenty-five dollars. Um, uh, this wasn't a brand-new machine, when we started renting it, um, I think it's about a sixty-five thousand dollar machine. But to purchase it in two thousand and twenty-one, uh, we would need this twenty-two thousand dollars to go ahead and purchase this machine.
Could you move back to the last slide, please?
Yeah.
Just on how much we paid already? Oh, uh, how much have we paid in rent that they're adding to it?
Eight thousand.
About eight thousand? Okay.
Yeah, so yeah, this is, this is from the vendor, I got this number a week or so ago. Um, this is what we would need to pay them in two thousand and twenty-one, and then the machine is ours. Um, we're no longer, we're leasing it or renting it, anything like that, so. So yeah, I'm, I'm kind of asking for the board's approval to go ahead and move forward with the purchasing of this machine.
Commissioner Heinon.
Mr. Chair, so actually, uh, you and myself have been involved with this, with our previous machine. New machine that has never worked properly. We brought it back to the factory, factory brought it back to us and we still had to fix it again, correct?
Yeah.
Now, that machine on the average timeframe takes five employees, if it's not working properly, the old one?
Correct, when you think about traffic control and everything, we've got a crew of six out there, uh, two one-ton pickups, uh, flaggers and, and everything. So a crew of six and multiple pieces of equipment out on the road, so.
So now, when they used this, used new rented machine last year, you put out double the output, I believe it was, or even more, of just using this machine alone.
Correct, yes, and we would, we at least doubled, almost tripled what we've done in previous years in a current year of crack filling, um, material.
So I had a conversation a week and a half ago with this vendor and it wasn't on this topic, it was something personally for me, because I knew the vendor.
Okay.
You know, and all of a sudden this got brought up in conversation and I'm going, oh yeah, that's right, we still are renting. And this vendor services all of the state of Minnesota, North Dakota, South Dakota, uh, I think Iowa too, I'm not sure. But there's like five other states and this is what everyone's going to. They have parts, they have everything on hand, they have access to everything, okay? Now, also talking to the vendor, I said, how do we get rid of our old machine? Chris, would you like to?
Yes, so what we would like to do with the old machine is sell it on an online bidding site. Um, and they have one that they work with, I think it's Blue Wave Auctions. And so we pay a nominal fee and they take care of everything. They have somebody that comes up, takes pictures, puts it on their website, sets the, the bidding date, uh, accepts the bids. And then it's the buyer's responsibility to pay any buyer premium and to come pick up the machine. Uh, we think that's a good option for us, we're not having to deal with taking bids, uh, talking to individuals. Um, yeah, we might house it, we may go ahead and deliver it over to the vendor just so it's out of our shop. Um, and then when it sells, we get a check for the, the maximum bid amount and, um, we're done with it then. We'll, we'll dispose of it like any other piece of a capital equipment.
Do you have any idea what, like, can you have a minimum bid or do you, do you have any idea what it's actually worth?
Uh, I, I do not, no. I know when we purchased the machine that we'd like to sell, uh, it's been six years ago, it was a, about a sixty thousand dollar machine. So, um, if we get a few thousand dollars out of it, I, I would be happy with that.
Okay, Mr. Johnson?
I'm just listening.
Okay.
Oh, Mr. Chair.
Yeah.
So talking to the vendor and the payoff is roughly twenty-two thousand. His opinion is that it would bring in almost three-quarters of that to the right individual in the southern states, because they use that old machine in the southern states a lot.
Yeah, and because they, they do that probably more year-round.
Correct.
We, we're not year-round with that.
Is that what the disclaimers?
Yeah. Well, you, what, what I understand, it would be sold as is, no warranties implied or given, uh, with it, so.
What, Mr. Chair, my recommendation, Chris, would be to. What, Mr. Chair, my recommendation, Chris, would be to get it sold. Put that on or against of what this original machine would cost, and then come back to us with a final number.
Okay.
That, that would be my recommendation. If we get five thousand, fifteen thousand, you know, that should be put towards this machine.
I agree.
Correct. How long is their, um, their deal or agreement open to purchase this one?
As long as.
Yeah, we have a month-to-month agreement. It's through the state bid contract. There's a state contract for renting equipment like that. Uh, we can rent it month-to-month, and that's what they've been working with us. And we could do that for up to thirty-six months. So we've got two more years we could continue renting it.
Mr. Chair, what's the monthly rent?
It's about, uh, four thousand dollars a month. So a little over four thousand dollars a month.
Mr. Chair, I agree with Commissioner Heinon at this point, uh, because they're going to credit all of it towards the buyout anyway. So let's just keep going month-to-month, sell our machine, and then have a, have a size up after that and pay it off.
Oh, we certainly do that. I just know for accounting purposes, it's, I don't understand all this, but there's some GASB requirements, and I don't know if Monti knows, about, uh, leasing versus owning. I think we can continue doing it. Our vendor's been really good with us to continue renting that. Um, we just may have to, to, to do some things at the end of the year to show that we are renting a piece of machinery versus owning a piece of machinery. And I don't know if you have any concerns from an auditing standpoint, uh, about that.
No.
I think our vendor, we can continue working with them on this month-to-month, um, agreement. Uh, it meets all the bidding requirements being on that state procurement contract. Uh, we're good to go there.
Sure.
Go ahead.
Chris, any concern about the equipment not being available to rent?
No, because that's the machine right there we like to buy. That's actually in our shop. We have it in our. As long as we don't take it back to them, I'm not going to.
Okay.
Mr. Chair, just for a backup comment, Commissioner Johnson, I told him, you're not getting it back.
We don't want to leave you without one, obviously.
Yeah, we were using it yesterday morning and then brought it back in when the weather changed. Um, uh, we'll probably, before the end of the week, we'll be back out with it, so using it.
So when does the online auction take place?
When we start it.
We haven't started it yet, so we, and I think we, those are negotiable. We can say we want it for a week or a month. I think we can set those. So I think I will default to whatever their recommendations are. They have a lot more experience with buying and selling these type of machines and, and, and I'd be inclined to go with their recommendation.
Mr. Chair, so spending an hour with the vendor on this machine, I thought I could just literally go out there and use it. They were so thorough. But they did say that, you know, thirty days i- is generally what they put it all for, you know?
Sure.
Thirty days online?
Yeah.
Wow, that's a long time.
You know, but that could be shortened too, depending on, you know, Chris and the vendor.
Most of the stuff that I do online is like, they'll give you two weeks' notice, and then they're going to be on there for six days to get it sold.
So it'll go in a short period of time, once it's online.
Is he confident we can get that other one sold?
Yeah, he says that people are looking for these in the southern states, of course.
Mr. Chair, Commissioners, um, just trying to think through the math here. So are we coming to consensus that we want to spend four grand to rent and wait until we sell? Or is our intent to buy any regardless, and whatever we get for it, we'll put towards the purchase price? I, I just, what I, my concern is I want to get in a position where we're spending four grand this month, four grand next month, four grand the next month. Pretty soon, we've bitten into a profit.
But that, that I think is going towards the purchase. So if we do four grand next month, that twenty-two goes down to eighteen, correct?
Yeah, yeah, that's how it's been working.
Okay, just wanted to clarify that.
That's how it's been working, but it might not work that way.
Yeah.
I'll talk to them again. They've been good. We were hoping, um, you know, last fall, we'd be able to do it and didn't get into the budget. So we went to, back to beginning of this year, back to a month-to-month, and they, they reduced the purchase price each month by what we've paid in.
I guess I don't have an issue if they're going to reduce it, but if we're just going to spend four grand, that's the only issue I would have.
In five months, it'll be paid for.
That's.
I don't, I don't believe that the company's going to do that.
Yeah.
I don't know.
Mr. Chair, so, you know, after we get done talking about this and it gets approved or denied, or whatever the action's going to be. If it does get approved, uh, Chris makes a call and they've got it online.
Okay.
That's how quick this process is going to work.
Okay.
You know, so it's not going to be three months down the road. This is going to be a fairly quick process.
Do we have a consensus that we're all in agreement that, you know, we're going to purchase this?
For me personally, that's not an issue. I, I agree with that. What I don't want to get into is if we don't have a four thousand dollar credit coming for renting.
Yeah, we don't want to throw away money.
We need to move on it.
Mr. Chair, they also, he, the vendor also clarified that with me too.
Okay.
Okay, is that this ain't going to change? Whatever we have in process is going to be, and they're not going to change numbers.
Okay. So do we, we do, we don't need a motion on this, then I think just the consensus?
I think so. If there's a consensus, we'll go ahead and sell the, the old machine, get that on the auction and sell that. And then if that can happen within the next month, then I'll bring that number back and then we can talk about it again, just purchasing that. I'll contact the vendor and say, for sure, one more month of this, and, and, um, we'll probably get an invoice and we'll go.
And I guess if you could clarify with them that we'll get a four thousand dollar credit.
Sure.
That would be great. If, if not, I think we need to talk about it sooner.
Sure, okay, yeah, by the next.
Okay, so the consensus is, I guess, we've heard from everybody about Commissioner Schlangen. Are you okay with that arrangement? Okay, so the consensus for that is good.
All right, very good. Um, since we're talking about equipment, I have a couple other items that were not in the budget that I'm, I would like, uh, approval for. We would like to purchase a new, uh, disc bar mower. Uh, we have actually, uh, five of these. We'd like to replace one of them that was purchased in two thousand and ten. Um, we thought that maybe we could use it one more year, but it is, it is just wore out, uh, and it's beyond repair. So it wasn't in the two thousand and twenty-one budget as proposed back last fall. So this, the purchase of one of these would be sixteen-five. Um, this is what we do most of our mowing on our roadside. If, if you didn't know, uh, state law prohibits us from mowing the full width or a right-of-way until August first. So up until August first, we're only doing the first pass next to our, our ditches. So most of our mowing is completed with one of these, these disc bar mowers. Ten years, that's about, they're, they're about used up after that time.
And the repairs on them gets very spendy.
Oh, yeah, you're spending, I mean, rebuild kit, you're better off buying a whole new, new, um, mower at that point. And just kind of wrapped in together, the mechanic shop truck was in the budget for two thousand and twenty-one. Originally, I had requested to purchase just the, the cabin chassis. The board was, uh, I was fortunate enough, the board went in and approved to go ahead and buy the whole package. To back up even one more year, for the two thousand and twenty budget, I had requested to buy, to replace the mechanic shop truck, um, as a whole package, and it wasn't approved in two thousand and twenty. I, I, and for the twenty-one budget, I requested just to purchase basically half of the cost, the cabin chassis, and then I always thought, the next year, I'll request the second half. The board, uh, approved purchasing all of it, and I had to admit, I was kind of caught flat-footed at the time with the total price. Um, and so what got approved was eighty-eight thousand dollars for to purchase that whole truck. Well, fast forward to now, we're starting to spec it out. Prices are coming in higher with that. Couple that with, uh, the virus, the pandemic, uh, supply chains are all out of whack, and I think we're seeing a little bit of increase as a result of that. So we need a little over another thirty thousand dollars to go ahead and complete that package. Uh, that mechanic shop truck would include the, um, the cab, the chassis, the box, and a small utility crane on that to, that's going to be used to lift, uh, parts when repairing that. And I wanted to mention all these kind of as a group. Um, we have about seventy-eight thousand dollars left over from, um, our capital, our three oh four. Our high, road and highway budget shop expenses, there's about seventy-eight thousand dollars of that budget left over at the end of two thousand and twenty. So as a, as an option, I would, uh, I would propose that we, we do a budget amendment and transfer that, that budget savings from two thousand and twenty into two thousand and twenty-one to kind of cover these additional expenses. That would cover the crack filler, but if we get some of that recouped back from the online auction, maybe we don't need all of that seventy-eight thousand dollars. So that's why I want to talk about all these kind of things as one package, because I, I have that as an option to, to transfer some budget from two thousand and twenty into two thousand and twenty-one.
Mr. Chair.
Okay, go ahead.
Uh, this is going to be for Monty, I think. So when it's in the Fund thirteen and they don't use it in two thousand and twenty, does it stay accumulative for the next year for them to use?
It stays in the Fund thirteen.
It does stay, okay. That was my question.
It doesn't go back in the general.
Doesn't.
Oh, it does not, no.
Mr. Chair, Chris, how, what's your life expectancy of the mechanical shop, shop truck? What are you thinking?
Oh, fifteen, twenty years, probably. The one we're replacing is twenty-five years old.
Okay.
So.
For tho- those of you that weren't here, you know, I was, I, I supported this heavily because one is we don't have a crane on our other one.
Yeah, correct.
And we have to look a little bit out there, what they're doing out on, you know, when they're out on the roads and stuff like that. And, you know, they've been jacking and lifting and stuff like that. So we need the crane part desperately, I think. You know, maybe we're going to save a workman's comp claim or something like that down the road. So I think this is a needed deal. I think we have the mechanics that we have are pretty good mechanics right now.
Yeah.
And I think the savings on this will come back in a short period of time.
Mr. Chair, and that is correct. I, I speak for myself too. I totally agreed with this, and all of the three previous Commissioners had to agree with this too, that they thought this was a great thing to do, you know, to have.
Yeah.
I think Commissioner Pop had an excellent point there about a worker's comp claim. We have one mechanic, uh, for our fleet of, you know, about four, thirteen snowplow piece of equipment, plus we have other equipment. So we're doing, he would use his truck to be doing repairs out in the field, you know, not in his shop where he has all this tool. So you think about any kind of a heavy equipment mechanic, we're, we're wanting to equip him with a similar type truck, you know, one with the box, the tools, the, um, the small crane on there, so we can handle all that.
Mr. Chair, I, I think the money is there. We're going to get money back on the crack sealant, uh, melter. Uh, I don't see a problem with it.
You're going to need a motion to, uh, move that money around and approve the purchase, or you just need consensus?
So the, the budget thing, um, is kind of like to make the paper, you know, the paper budget look like we're good. We could bring that back forward.
What I'd do is I'd just, I'd do a resolution on a future consent agenda to amend the budget, yeah.
Okay.
I think just consensus is good enough for today.
Yeah.
Yeah, because, Mr. Chair, I'm assuming by the next meeting we have, anyway, we'll have information on that, that crack sealer.
Yeah, we'll, we'll, uh, we'll have it on auction for sure. Um, actually, we've got a couple weeks until the next board meeting, so. Well, I don't know if the, the auction will be closed or not, but we'll have it out there and we'll know what the bids are coming in at that point, even if it's not closed, so.
Put a buy now feature on there.
Maybe we can do that.
Commissioner Schlangen, are you okay with them moves?
Yes.
Okay, um, one thing I do notice where, when you try to buy online is that most people wait till the last hours.
Yeah, and then that's when it gets exciting.
Yeah.
Exciting.
All right, uh, well, moving on, the next item I have for you today is to adopt a resolution and award a construction contract of our, um, mill and overlay projects on County Road forty-six, eighty-eight, eighty-nine, and ninety. And I list the city project, uh, because that portion of our County Road ninety that goes down by the airport goes into Sherburne County, uh, but is part of, uh, it's a city street at that point. You, you may recall, we did get an administrative agreement approved between us and the city of St. Cloud, so they've committed to paying their share of the costs. Um, we opened bids, uh, a week ago on Friday, and we combined those mill and overlay projects with our maintenance, uh, patching project, and I think that served us well this time. We, we ended up getting, uh, five bids here, so that's, that's, that's great for, in my perspective. We don't always get that. We used to get three bids. Um, and then when Tri-City paving got bought out by Knife River, we would get maybe two bids. So I think we, by combining all those together, we've increased the quantity, which has attracted more bidders. Um, results in lower unit prices and, and more competition. And so the lowest responsible bidder was OMG Midwest, uh, doing business at Minnesota Paving Materials. You may remember this company as Hard Drives. They were formerly known as Hard Drive before they got purchased. So their total bid came in at, for all these mill and overlays and our patching project, um, one million, two hundred and fifty-nine thousand, two hundred and twenty-eight dollars and seventeen cents. That is almost twenty-one percent below our estimate, so, so really good. We were estimating almost one point six million dollars. And so when you see something that low, you look, whoa, did we have something off on our estimate? But I would like to point out that our engineers estimated one million, five hundred and ninety-one thousand, falls right in the middle of all of our five bidders. So maybe just slightly above Dunick, but less than Central Specialties and less than Aztec. So that's what we hope for as engineers, that we put out an estimate and we fall right in the range of bidders. If we were higher than all of them, then you could say, well, maybe we're estimating too much. And consequently, if all the bidders were higher than our estimate, then we know we're not budgeting enough and estimating enough. So I think we had a good estimate because we fell right in the middle of our bidders, but because the competition was there, we got really great, uh, prices. And, and I'll just kind of point out, we were, we were expecting, uh, most of our mix to be about fifty-five dollars a ton. They're giving it to us for forty-nine dollars a ton, and that, that's huge. In this volatility of oil prices and stuff, I think that's huge that we were able to get forty-nine dollars a ton.
Yeah.
So that's, I'm recommending awarding a construction contract to OMG Midwest, doing business as Minnesota Paving and Materials.
Mr. Chair, I'll make a motion to that effect.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded to award, uh, mill and overlay and patching to OMG Midwest.
Yep.
Any further discussion?
Uh, Mr. Chair.
Yep.
Chris, have we used this company in the past?
Yes, it's a lot of the same local staff, uh, that's, that was there with, uh, when it was Hard Drives.
Just a different name.
Yep.
Thank you.
Okay, any other discussion? Beth, you want to call the roll?
Commissioner Schlangen.
Aye.
Commissioner Johnson.
Aye.
Commissioner Pop.
Aye.
Commissioner Kapinski.
Aye.
Commissioner Heinon.
Aye.
Any updates far as anything we should know?
Uh, none at this time. Um, I know we have a committee of the whole next week to talk about, uh, the five-year plan and where that's going, so I'll probably have some more sales tax numbers at that point. Uh, yeah, that's all I have at this time, so unless there's any questions.
The design for those bridges coming along?
Yes, yes, our design is complete. We've got approval, uh, for the funding. Now, the big thing is we're just working through the permitting process with the DNR. One of the bridges, the one on County Road eighty, this is kind of interesting. I'll be playing dual roles. As the county highway engineer, I'll need to bring it to the ditch authority because we'll be doing work in County Ditch eleven for that County Road eighty. So we'll be approving our own work kind of thing. It's kind of goofy, but state law dictates that, so that'll be coming up at a future meeting.
Mr. Chair, uh, Chris, timeline again, County Road fifty, County Road eighty, what are you seeing?
I think that, I think it's going most likely to be this fall. We want to make sure we get the permit in place from the DNR, and then, then we'll be ready to advertise.
In barring a weather issue, is it a two-week project, six-week project? What are you thinking?
Oh, I think, yeah, within a month. Uh, those box culverts will get set within a week, but then all the grading and excavating beforehand. It may take two or three days to demolish the old bridge, um, two or three days to set those box culverts, maybe two or three more days. So we're talking three weeks, maybe.
So maybe October first is a rough idea of when these bridges could be done.
Yeah, yeah, I think so. Um, be later this fall. We've done these kind of work, uh, actually in the winter too. Like I said, we're working through the DNR permitting process. There may be some kind of requirement to stay out of the stream during certain times of the year, and we'll have to work with that. Uh, but once we get the green light to go with construction, it's a relatively quick project since it's all precast materials and things like that.
That would be really, uh, nice to be done for harvest season.
I can understand that, yeah.
Um, on County Road eighty, we're going to widen that as wide as possible?
Yeah, what we can do, uh, today, yeah, so it's a narrow one-lane bridge. It will definitely be two lanes with a small shoulder there. And it's going to be wide enough that we won't need guard rail up there. Guard rail is always a maintenance issue, and then guard rail in itself is a hazard, but.
Well, I'm just, I'm more concerned if we go forward ever and that becomes, uh, on part of that ring road that we have that done, so we don't have to go back in there.
Yeah, so w- when we get to the ring road, we'll have to look at what we're projecting now. So we got approval with the funding to build based on today's traffic volumes projected out for twenty years. Now, if we build that ring road and the traffic volumes come up higher and we need something wider. The benefit of having a box culvert there is that it's precast, actually, we can pull off the in sections, we can put another section on either end without having to tear up the whole structure.
All right.
So.
I guess that's what I was going to.
It ma- it may not be for future use, but it's easily expandable, let's say that.
Yeah, okay, great.
Any other questions for Chris? All right.
Thank you, Chris.
Thank you, Chris.
Then we'll move on to Commissioner Concerns, and we have, uh, discussion on DMV with, from Commissioner Johnson.
Commissioner Johnson.
Hello, Nadine, how are you doing?
Good.
Good.
Good morning. Is it still morning or?
Barely. Barely.
Just about.
Three minutes.
Good morning. All right, so, um, just to give you a brief update on where we're at today, um, so as you may be aware, um, we had a full-time DMV staff give her notice a couple of weeks back, and so she has moved to the Human Services Department. So we are down to one full-time DMV staff person at this time. Um, so, uh, lu- luckily for us, the timing was perfect. Um, because, uh, you gentlemen approved to change that part-time position to full-time, we were able to get that position posted, and, um, it just so happened that the timing of the one staff member switching to a different department uh, worked out great. Uh, we already had the position posted, and therefore we were able to proceed forward with interviews. So now I had two positions to fill, one which has been accepted and filled by my temporary person. Um, and then we are this close to making an offer to another, uh, candidate. Hopefully, um, that will happen today or tomorrow, working with, um, Johanna on that. So with that said, um, we have contacted DVS, and there's a thorough background check that these new employees have to go through, uh, fingerprinting, uh, it goes to the Criminal Bureau of Investigation. And DVS has told us it can take up to sixty days before we will get approval for them to access that system. Um, I have tried to pressure them on this timeline and, um, haven't gotten anywhere with that. It is, it is what it is, and we, we have to sit and wait. The good news is, is that the DNR access is, uh, much quicker. So my new person that, um, has already accepted, already does have DNR access, and she has already been assisting with, um, Mees, who is one of our, um, dealers. Um, so, uh, we've got her already doing some of the DMV functions already and handling the daily reports, and she is still managing the appointment system and the queue system. So that's kinda where we're at. We're running with two full-time appointment schedules. We are booked out three solid weeks. One appointment schedule is strictly for the one DMV staff, um, and the other schedule is full from open to close with driver's license renewals. So that's our current situation. So, um, opportunity for you gentlemen to throw some questions at me.
Nadine, what do you foresee for getting rid of appointments and going back to walk-ins?
So we are currently still assisting walk-ins as we can squeeze them in, in between the appointments. Um, the challenge that we have, and the guard does a very good job of letting know, letting the walk-ins know right away that they could end up sitting a bit and waiting. Um, we're really, it's really important to me that if we're pressuring people and requesting them to make an online appointment, that we honor that appointment. And so I don't want someone who has an appointment to come in and sit a half an hour because now we squeezed in five walk-ins. Um, so we're kinda juggling what we can, and we still are helping some walk-ins in between time when we have a really fast transaction and we have a block of time of, let's say, fifteen minutes blocked off, uh, they'll grab a couple of people, um, that they can process. So we're still doing that. Um, we would, we, we simply do not have a staff person right now, um, Commissioner Johnson, to handle walk-ins. I'm, I'm down to one DMV person.
So is your intent to stick with appointments only?
Um, that's a, that's really a hard question at this point in time. Um, I would like to see if we decide to make a decision for future growth for the DMV that we still go back to offering walk-ins. If we had adequate staff, we could have one dedicated staff helping walk-ins all day long, and we could have another dedicated staff working on the appointments. We also have space issues, which you're aware of. Um, and there are other offices in that hallway that, um, share that hallway space with my office, and, um, the demand is still really high. So if we open the floodgates up, um, number one, we can't right now because I don't have staff to assist them. Number two, um, we're gonna, we're gonna fall back into that space issue.
Would it still be correct to say that you've got a full-timer spending one full day of the week doing strictly dealer?
Yep, so we actually have seven dealers, and we block off two afternoons a week. Um, Tuesday and Thursday afternoons, um, from one o'clock to four-thirty are dedicated to get, um, the dealer work done. Um, most of the dealers drop off two times a week. And so what we've had to do, um, with losing a staff member is we've had to block off schedule for our one DMV person so that she can also get the dealer work done in the afternoons and get that back to the dealers.
So if the public comes in and meets, I'm sorry, I forgot his name, Driver.
Tyler?
Tyler. Tyler, thank you. So if he comes in, the public takes a look at the counter, they see nobody's at the counter, and that's because this person has scheduled dealer work.
Yep.
Tyler then is communicating to them that there is no spot available.
Yep.
So he, that communication is happening.
Yeah, he does a very good job with that. Mm-hmm.
Okay.
And we pull them, we are pulling her back from the front counter when she does dealer work. Um, there is a back desk station, um, that we have her process dealer work at just because of that public perception. Um, if they see her sitting at the counter, of course, um, naturally you would assume she's available to assist you, and she would not be.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Uh, Nadine and I did meet earlier this morning, uh, and went over a few things. Couple of things that, that I requested her bring back to us were, uh, on the MICA meeting, I believe that was MICA, there's a lot of committees out there, but they, they said they are approving more, uh, from the funds of, of license renewals and tabs and stuff like that. I wanted her to research that and, and, and bring that back to see what that would do for the budget, how much that would add in and, and everything like that, so.
Right, and I think that's a MICA support, and I don't know if there's a bill.
Okay.
Before the state legislature for that.
Okay, I, I thought they were, that was actually getting approved.
This was one of the, one of the platforms that MICA had, like, we will discuss them in the fall.
Okay.
And I think that was one of the platforms, but I don't know if there's a bill or a companion bill.
All right.
So.
They've been discussing that the last few years. Um, we actually just got done with a time-motion study for the DMV services in our office that was generated from the DVS and Winona State University. Um, and so we did complete that time-motion study and got our findings in as they are looking at, um, evaluating that study with all the DMVs, um, to determine how much time is being spent on certain types of transactions, and if at this time, of course, um, should we be receiving some more of that fee that's being charged. Um, kind of noticed over the last three years, the trend has be- been when we went to Minlars, and now we're on Min Drive. When we went to Minlars, um, what happened is we saw a really huge swing on the amount of work that we were doing in our office versus what was being done at the state. So we are doing a lot more of the workload now, a majority of the workload with these transactions, where before titles and things would get to, sent to the state, the s- state would finish that process. Um, that has totally changed in the last few years. So that's also why they're really pushing to get these individual DMVs higher, higher fees for the service that we're providing.
Okay. Anything else?
Mr. Chair, so Nadine, I'm not gonna hold you to this, but are we looking two months out, three months out before we could kind of open the doors for walk-ins? Apparently sixty days, it's gonna be two months anyway, right?
It, it'll be close to that. Um, we have already completed the bracket, background check and fingerprinting for the one staff that has already accepted. Um, so, and we've a- already started kinda training her as we can and as we're allowed to do. Um, I've also reached out to another DMV office in Morrison County. They have a bigger office and six staff, and I've reached out to them about having them do some training for my new staff because I only have one person, and I can't pull my one person off her appointments to train new staff. So, uh, I've reached out to Morrison County. Um, they're looking at, um, if that's a possibility to send, uh, my staff there to do some training with their DMV staff. Um, and then also we need to get the go-ahead from the state to do that. So, um, I, you know, I'm really hopeful, Commissioner Heinan, that it doesn't take sixty days. Um, you know, I'm kind of at their mercy. I'm gonna do everything I can on this end to have them prepared as much as they can, so the minute they have that access, they can start assisting with even simple services like disability permits, uh, tab renewals fairly easily. Um, training on driver's license at this time would probably be a no. So.
Nadine, and you do have the, uh, a individual, um, or at least, uh, one picked out at this point, whether they accept or not?
Yep, so two positions. The one has been full. The other one, um, Johanna was going to reach out to them yesterday, hopefully, and get in contact with them and make an offer. So, um, hopefully we get that going, and then I can pull her in quickly and get the paperwork and the fingerprinting done. Um, I'm sure it'll be a couple of weeks before she would be able to start, but there's no reason why I couldn't get the paperwork in sooner.
Okay.
Mr. Chair, just a couple continuing comments, and, and by no means this is not a negative reflection on your office, but I, from my viewpoint, up until this mutual aid thing, this is what my phone rings for, this is what I get emails for. And it's a service we're providing, and I think everybody in this room understands that at the end of the day, that needs to be done with excellence, and it needs to have the taxpayer or the people that are coming in in mind. So with all these nuances going on about employees, sixty-day background checks, COVID, the list goes on. I, I hope we're all in agreement and have consensus that we're gonna get this thing to a point of excellence, and if that's not our consensus, we should throw it out.
Yep.
That's where I'm coming from personally.
Yep.
I don't wanna do this halfway. I don't want this to be a cost to the county. To, in my opinion, if it ends up being revenue neutral, that's good enough for me.
Yep.
Because I believe the service is worth that. So I, I just, I want you all to know where I'm coming from, and if you're not in consensus with that, we need to have some more discussion because I don't wanna continue to have these discussions next year and the year after, and the year after that.
Yeah, we are definitely at a very pivotal point with our DMV services.
And again, I understand the nuances, that's not what I'm saying.
Yep.
But our end goal, I think, between the Auditor Treasurer's Office and this board needs to be the same. And if it's not, let's talk about it right now, because we're gonna put a lot of time and effort in with ourselves and her office if we don't get this fixed. And I realize there's some things that aren't in our control right now.
Yeah.
Talking long-term, when we get past these nuances, that needs to be our goal. And if it's not, I think we should talk about it.
Mr. Chair, I, I think I'm not gonna speak for even past commissioners, but that's always been the goal, you know? Uh, the minute the taxpayers are paying for it, that's the minute it gets shut down. That's my opinion. As long as it's self-sustaining, I'm okay with that.
And I think we've been, we've been, uh, income-based, basically, for the last few years.
So, yeah, we do show a little bit of a surplus at the end of the year, um, but it's not enough to, even at this point in time, cover another full-time employee. But with that said, if you want the service to be excellent, at what point in time do you make the decision to leap and get that person in hopes that it's gonna generate enough additional revenue with that extra set of hands to be cost-neutral? So that's kinda where we're at. We, what we have, um, will be covered in the, you know, the service, the revenue that we're generating now. But if, if you're looking to provide even better service in that area, we, we do need to sit down and have a talk about what does that look like? What do the numbers look like? What, where will they be housed? And, you know?
It, it, there's two major problems that I see is, one is we can't take care of the people we need to take care of now, and we've also lost some dealers, um, especially one locally that, to me, is just unacceptable. I mean, I, I, I understand why, I just don't believe it's an acceptable thing to continue moving down the road when we can't even take care of a, a local dealer here. And so, you know, maybe the time is to have a cow after we get through some of these nuances here and, and make some decisions of what we're gonna do going forward, but I, I just really like to have it done in excellence.
I think this is a compounding issue, starting with the government down in the cities.
Sure.
I, they're, they're expecting everybody else to do a lot of the work, and they're keeping all the money, or a lot of the money. You know, I, this, and it's been an ongoing issue, and obviously Nadine has brought it up. It's been talked about for quite a while, it just brought up again at the MICA deal, but it doesn't, you know, I'm not looking at making money for the county on this, eh, but I think if we take away the service, it's going to be a, a very bad thing for the taxpayers. So as long as we can be, like, like Commissioner Heinan said, revenue neutral and stuff like that, and, and provide this service at whatever the best ability we could, I think, I think that's what we gotta look at. I, I like the excellence, but we gotta, excellence can have a lo- a huge chart.
No, I understand. I, I think it's just a level of attitude.
Yep.
Of the county board and the Auditor Treasurer's Office.
Absolutely.
That we're towards that same goal of excellence. I didn't say perfection.
No, I, I, I definitely, we gotta do the best we can with the dollars we are allowed.
Thank you, Nadine, for the update.
Yep, thanks. Um, one other qu- thing I have is that through Environment and Natural Resources, there's a bill before the state legislature, or maybe you've seen it, that you put a twenty-five-dollar, uh, fee per parcel that they want to go to support the SWCD, and they've tied it to the Clean Water Act now, that if the county doesn't oblige by this, they won't get the, the SWCD won't get the clean water funds. So I, they talked about auditor treasures are not in support of this, and I was just wondering how you felt about that.
Yeah, I haven't, that hasn't hit my desk yet.
Okay, you know, it's a Representative Hanson has supplied the bill, and he's a former SWCD manager, and he is bound and determined to get SWCD's funding, and he has no clue that if they go this route, we will take our two hundred and fifty thousand or whatever we do and pull it and let them be totally supplied. They're looking for people to testify now at the Capitol when this bill comes up. And this is something that, you know, should not happen in my book, but.
I'll take a look at it, Commissioner Pop.
Hey, thanks.
Anything else, gentlemen?
Thank you.
Bill.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Okay.
I, I have a question if I can. Um, it was about, uh, on the consent agenda number five with that liquor license?
Oh, on the consent a- agenda, there was a new liquor license for the Granite City Speedway.
Yep.
So Granite City Speedway was sold, and the new owners now need to apply for the liquor license. So, um, it's just switching ownership is all.
Yep.
Okay.
Anything else?
Thanks.
Thank you.
Thank you.
As long as we're on Commissioner Concerns, is there any, anything else? I have one Commissioner concern, but I'll take that up with the department hand afterwards.
Okay.
Um. Committee meetings?
I, I have, uh, one to propose. Um, let's see, let's see what else has.
We must've missed, uh, committee meetings attended.
Yeah, it's not on our.
It's not on the agenda this time.
Sorry, what, okay?
Committee meetings attended, you know?
Monthly update. Uh, that's, that's an interesting question. You're, you're right, uh.
Beth will get used to that. She'll put it on next time.
I missed? The, the, uh, Commissioner meeting updates.
Yeah.
Commissioner meeting updates.
It's all right.
All right, go ahead.
I, I missed it, too. I.
Sounds good.
I missed it, too.
Yep. So Commissioner Slungin, can you, whoop, she left.
Commissioner meeting updates.
I just seen her walk out. Beth, you got your Commissioner meeting updates?
Okay. Um, yesterday I was on for the orientation for the career solutions to understand what's all entailed with that. Let's see, I've been to the Minden Council meeting and got to meet the people up there. Let's see, I've been to the Minham Township meeting and got to meet the people up there.
C G A, C J I meeting, Beth, I believe you attended that the other day. You were online. I was too, but I got kicked out three times, so I don't have much information on that one.
Can you tell me what the CGI means again?
Criminal Justice Initiative.
What I'm planning to, what?
Criminal Justice Initiative, that was eight o'clock in the morning last Thursday, I believe.
Right, yeah, they went through some of the things they've been working on, and their office is progressing pretty well with what's going on.
Is that it?
I think that's, I hadn't heard any special concerns to pass on.
Mr. Heinon, you want to go next?
Sure. So yes, I, I, I did, actually, I think I went to all the meetings, Beth did this last round. So I kept getting kicked out of the C G A, CGI meeting with my laptop, and I'll be working with Steve Stang with IT, figuring out what the issue was. I do know that Sheriff Troy Heck will be coming forth with us about the STS program, and we'll see what's going to happen with that. They only have two people right now. And I think their jail went up to like forty people? Beth, was that correct, right now, for intake?
We have an in, we have an increase, huh?
Yeah, so there's an increase on that. I did visit the annual township meeting too, and that was interesting. And then I'm Chair of the Career Solutions Board, and we've got some serious issues there with deed, and I'll be on a phone call conversation tomorrow morning with them, with deed. I think we know who's going to be involved with that, Commissioner Pop, right? And that'll be an interesting meeting. What's happening is that all of the other branches are opening up, and they won't let Say Cloud open up yet, but Monticello, there's five others that are already opened up, twenty five percent capacity, and deed holds fifty percent of our rent in, at the Vortec there, and they're not letting us open up. So tomorrow morning's conversation will be about that. Thank you.
All right, thanks.
Yes.
Criminal Justice had about forty cases that were open that were, they're trying to move them through, and they plan on, they haven't had any of the sessions, um, meeting in the building yet. They were trying to work on getting things going.
Okay. Commissioner Binsky?
So yesterday we had a committee based off the Emergency Communications Board. We had an overview of, of where they're basing it off of Iowa.
Sorry.
In Iowa, uh, Radio Board that they have. So we got a big overview on what they got, what they have going on there. We had a lot of concerns from the, the staff that, that is on this committee. We also know, just like everything, funding is an issue. So that's our first meeting on that. We've got all of these webinars to get us caught up, so we can attend these meetings and, and actually be a asset. So we got meetings for the meetings.
Meetings for the meetings.
Yeah. So the other thing is, is we're on the MICA. One of the questions, did you, did you ever hear the clarification, was it three meetings you could miss, or was that three virtually?
You mean after the governor's.
Yeah.
I think we can have thr- three virtual meetings, and after that you've got to be in person.
Okay, all right. That was, that was a clarification. I, I do believe they found the funding or put the funding for the accounting error. They put that in the budget now, so they got a home for that, that funding error. Other than that, I don't think I've got anything else.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
You know, we, we all sit on so many boards, and that's the main thing that all of our boards are all about, where is the funding going to come from?
Yeah.
And I think it's, I think we've all come to the conclusion that once we get out of this crisis of what we're happening, nothing's going to change.
Mm-hmm.
You know, the funding will always be a problem until we get out of this crisis of what we have right now, until it takes care of itself. That's when we're going to find a general direction of, of funding's going to go and come.
And one of the things that I, one of the things I brought up on this Radio Board, everything I've heard since I got on these boards is it moves so slow, and they evaluate, 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 and I brought up the point that by the time the government or Minnesota or these boards choose to move on something, they're already two software versions behind.
Right.
And they all kind of chuckled on that, and they're like, welcome to government.
Government.
So, one thing that Jared mentioned that we were on MICA, you know, that the forecast went from a one point six billion dollar deficit to a one point three billion dollar surplus, you know? And then the, they don't have exact figures, but about three billion dollars is going to go to counties.
Yep.
That, in this new, you know, one point tri, one point nine trillion dollars.
Didn't they caveat that though, and say, don't hold us to this?
Yeah, they said, don't, don't hold us to it, but that's, that's what the proposal see, and, you know, on, we were on before the, before the meeting, and they were talking a little bit, some of the other commissioners, and they were talking about how they're going to spend it, you know, and it was anywheres from, you know, you know, things that create jobs to, one commissioner says, I don't know, we might give all of our residents a ten percent property tax break, you know? I mean, you know, that's, that's the kind of jokes that went on when they were doing that. The other part that, just, just to go back to kind of support what Commissioner Berkeley was always interested, there will be no money for pension funding this year. He was always, you know, get that pension funded out there. Property tax cut is maybe on the books with, because of the, you know, they're going to have to come to some plan between the Democrats and the Republicans, and they said property tax is probably going to be on the board. What else did they have? Oh, the, from the state sales tax, that the, the state sales tax is high from last year, extremely high, so they don't know if they're going to push some to, there's a statutory requirement, but it may go some to the general fund again, you know? So that's what else did I have? What else did I have? Oh, I had the Rum River Drainage. It was supposed to be a three to five meeting, and I think it was three to six. They have come to an agreement, you know, I'm really narrow focused that we don't need another layer of government for Chris to go through or anybody to get our ditches cleaned. And they would like to have say but no authority, I think is what we came for, and they would like to move into the private ditches, and if they want to go into private ditches, you know, my theory is let them go, because they're not going to get much cooperation on private ditches unless they get some teeth through the soil and water deal. It was good, I think, some of the people that really wanted to, to put the teeth to this so that they could have some say from these water plants, I think had to back off because they could see that there just wasn't, wasn't any support. And, oh, they tried tying it to the, the BMP program, you know, Better Management Practices. They thought, maybe they could tie it to BMP, but, you know, BM, the Better Management Practices are very low on funds right now, they're actually looking at putting another two point five million into that through the state, I think it's going to be an automatic for Then I, yesterday I had, this was an interesting meeting Roxanne was on, through AIS Committee, the Lake Association, and I don't know who else is involved in this, they want to buy a weeding combine, a combine that will take, what do you call it, curly leaf pond lea, pond weed out of the lake and put it up on the side or up and dry it out. They got a grant, the Saint Cloud State's got a grant to use it in their bio burner, maybe, and so they don't know what is it. Mixed on that, I am a little bit, one, we have like a hundred and eighty thousand bucks in that fund, and it keeps growing every year. They're looking for about a hundred thousand, and there's a match to go with it. And then there's ongoing maintenance, somebody to run it, you know, somebody to store, I think they need a trailer to haul it and a trailer to, for a dump trailer. We have to spend this money somehow. Is this, do we spend that much on that? You know, they, they're going to, they came, actually came with a proposal on what it cost last night, I didn't have a chance to look at it, but I think it's got some good merit on.
So, Mr. Chair, so the question I have, I know the Channel Lakes, the Briggs Lake and Rush and Julia, they actually do that two or three times a year, I wonder if they reached out to them?
Um, they looked at Clearwater Lake is the one they're looking, they own their own machine up there in Clearwater.
Okay.
And actually, they, they're going to look to that, what you just mentioned in three lakes, because they have a lid.
Yep.
You know, where they can, they get, they ta, have a taxing authority on that lid. So, you know, long going, they have to have a long term plan in my book, because, you know, the Lake Association will be really high on what they want to do now, and then as their members turn over, they'll be low and, and to, to continue this. So we'll see how this plan moves forward, but it was good conversation. We have some really good people on there, you know, Chuck Ralph from the Soil and Waters on there, Frank Hard from the Lake Association, so they have some good people on there, but we'll see what they come up with going forward. I think that was all that I had for.
We had a good planning commission meeting last week, for those of you didn't know, there was a request for an interim use permit to operate a real event center, which is going to be over in Watab, near Lake Andrew. The Kirchner's were here and requested interim use for that, and I think they've got a lot of great plans there, and I think the commission obviously gave them a lot of best luck, they, they had a lot of things prepared and ready to go, so they're going to start that process here soon.
Have they met with Watab Township on that one?
I believe the township was aware of it.
Really?
Because we usually ask about that.
Because the Lake Andrews got a huge amount of problems.
Okay, well, this would be, and so my understanding is if you took County Road thirty three and took a right on Fifth, I believe it's the first place on the left, does that make sense?
I don't know.
Okay.
It'd be on the corner, correct?
Yeah, very near the corner, I believe. Heavily wooded, heavily wooded area.
Correct.
Yeah, so, so it sounded exciting, and hopefully they can get things rolling there. Obviously, you heard about Mr. Bronson with the Pirates Cove, so that was, again, talked about the planning commission. Did spend some time a few weeks ago with the city of Foley, and also with the Gilmanton Town Board. It's my understanding that at the city council meeting tonight, the city is going to move ahead with a resolution for annexation. So what that means is that, my understanding is also that the Gilmanton Town Board has now set a meeting for tomorrow night to see if they could possibly move ahead with their OAA agreement before the city pulls the trigger on annexation. I think the city's at the point where they're kind of done talking about it and feel like they have to make a decision and move, and that probably lit a little bit of a fire under the town board to try to come to some conclusion in, in getting an OAA approved. I think the township's attorney is very straightforward in her assessment that this is probably a pretty good deal for Gilmanton Township to move ahead. I understand she's probably the attorney for Sock Rapids and some of those areas, so she's got a lot of background in the OAA business. I think, you know, the township, to their credit, has just had some concerns from some of their constituents about not letting this happen, and for other reasons, but I think the big picture is, this is going to be something that's going to be beneficial, obviously, to both the city and the township as we move forward in an OAA agreement. So we'll see, this, the council, I'm sure will act on the resolution tonight, wouldn't surprise me if they approve it. My understanding, after talking with the city administrators, is if they did approve the resolution, then the township would be notified, and then there'd be a thirty day window for them to discuss this before the state would make their decision. And I'm sure that the township's aware of that, so, again, the township's going to meet about this tomorrow night and see if they can come to some agreement on it, so things are moving forward. I also was able to attend the Maywood Township's annual meeting last week, and they've had a bridge that's been closed there for a while, and I did talk to Chris the next day, and he actually just got notification that that's been approved for replacement.
Oh, great.
So it sounds like Maywood's ready to step up with their ten thousand in engineering and ten thousand in construction costs and, and get that done, so. So that's a big plus for them, that's been down a while, and so that, that was good news. Other than that, we've got, I think I have AMC one oh one again tomorrow coming up, so that should be.
That should be the last one, I think, or I think that was, that's three.
Yeah, so anyways, thank you.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
I've got one more. I did, from our last cow, I did talk to a couple broadband consultants and stuff like that.
Great.
So how do we want to approach that? Would we want them to maybe dial in or something like that in the future to kind of give an overview of what's out there and what we could look at?
Sure, can we bring them in on the cow?
Mm-hmm, absolutely.
Hi.
Surely give me the contact information, and I could make the arrangements and have them on the agenda, so you can email me names and numbers, and I can take it from there?
Sounds good, I can do that.
Thank you, Jared.
Yep.
One thing that happened yesterday, we were talking a little bit after our meeting on, from AMC on mental health, is that one county up north ordered all their employees back to work in person.
Yeah, I, I believe by the fifteenth of April, employers can require.
They can, yeah.
Yeah.
They just said that there was mixed emotions, this one wanted to come back.
Yeah.
And was doing all kinds of good work at home, this one didn't want to come back, but they weren't getting crap out of that person.
Yeah.
You know, so I think, you know, it's something that we'll have to assess here and, and decide whether we want to do that, or, I mean, we definitely have employees that worked out better at home, and Bob has a good handle on that.
Well, Mr. Chair, and they're talking, you know, the legislators are talking, the governor's executive order is done with, they're looking at a waiver process too.
Okay.
So that all businesses and our governments can use a waiver system to let people work at home.
Okay, yeah.
So that's going to be in front of legislators too.
That was one of the comments that came out that I thought was pretty interesting, starting Monday, you know?
Great.
So, do we have any set committee of the holes?
We do.
Okay. And the quarterly business review is Thursday, March twenty fifth at seven forty five, we'll just register everyone for that. I, I think unfortunately, sometimes this QBR collides with the BEP meeting, unfortunately, but again, we'll go ahead and register everyone, it's virtual, and it's Thursday, the twenty fifth, seven forty five, we'll register, then you'll get an email, it's got the link.
Okay.
That's the King Banyan Quarterly Business Review.
That's on March, you said?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
March twenty fifth, a Thursday, seven forty five. Okay. And the next one is the, it's the Township Officers Spring Meeting, that's April eighth, seven thirty, St. Georgetown Hall, the eighth, at seven thirty, St. Georgetown Hall. I can't, it's the first time I can remember being at the St. Georgetown Hall.
It's new, I think, isn't it?
It's new, yeah.
Yeah.
That's a big card we got to move the door.
It's new.
Fairly new.
Fairly new, so I.
Yeah.
I, I think the, the reasoning here was that they've been over in Watab, over in Watab.
Yeah.
And they got some pushback from the eastern part of the county.
Correct.
Oh, sure, right, yeah.
That's nice, yeah.
Moving around.
And, once again, you'll give us the information to talk about.
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Yes, sir. Lastly, this is more kind of a, several issues thrown together, I don't have a date for you, but here's the topics. Jerry Monchi wants to discuss with the board the Mississippi River watershed and possibly it, it being divided into two subwatersheds, and this is all this one watershed, one plan topic, he'd like to discuss that with you all and committee of the whole. Bob Corninas, I know, would like to discuss with the county board, a new position which he proposes that would be, its, its mission in life would be to maximize revenue collections. And then thirdly, I propose to Sheriff Heck discussing with the board the, the STS program, its cost, its value, its utilization, and so on and so forth, and he, he's open to discussing that with you all. Kind of what triggered that was the notification from the state about an increased cost for that program, and, and also in the past year, there hasn't been much in the way of STS crews, of course, that's not his fault.
Yep.
So, um, Jerry proposes, uh, he, it looks like Jerry is open any day the week of, the last week of the month.
Do you, I guess, my question to the rest of you is that, that's three topics. And I think a couple of them are going to be pretty lengthy. I wouldn't want to do all three in one day.
Okay, I, I think my, 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 that's your call, of course. I want to just make sure trip, make your trip out here while worth your time.
Sometimes you can get too cluttered and it takes too long and you kind of push the last one through.
You know, um, if you were to pick the topics to choose from, I, I think, I know Jerry very much wants to speak with you soon, sooner rather than later about the Mississippi watershed. And I know Bob Corinnes also wishes to speak to you about his issue. If there's any issue that probably could be delayed, it'd be the STS discussion.
Okay.
You know, it's possible then, um, with STS, if you just address it as one issue, it could just be on a regular county board agenda and not, I mean, I, I don't want to ask you to come out here for twenty minute cowl.
No.
So, do you want a limit to those two things?
Yep.
One watershed and then, okay. So how about what's your availability in the week of March twenty-ninth? Week of March twenty-ninth.
So Tuesdays always work best for me because I always book out Tuesdays because of meetings.
I don't have anything on that Tuesday. Tuesday would work.
Tuesday, the thirtieth would work.
Okay.
She's not there.
That'd be a go then, Tuesday, nine AM. Here in the boardroom.
Yep.
Again, those two topics, Mississippi watershed and then Human Services Revenue Maximization Position. Okay, that's great. Okay. And that's all we have.
Um, Monty, then would you be putting the STS on our first April meeting?
Yeah, I think I'd just put that as a regular agenda. You bet. Let's just do that. You know, and just a couple reminders too is, uh, your next committee of the hall is Tuesday, March twenty-third at nine. And it's, it's got quite a few topics. The Vetter Johnson, uh, proposal, um, presentation on Human Services, Land Services, the Tax Canvas System issue and also the road program. I'm going to bring a snack for that.
What was that, the twenty-third?
Yes, sir, Tuesday, twenty-third.
Snack?
Bring a snack.
Put snack on there. PSI.
And just one final reminder and that is, you, at your next board being April sixth, uh, we'll have the employee forum, uh, which would begin at eight AM.
Okay.
Yes, at AM. I think that we decided to schedule those about, eh, three times a year, two or three times a year. So your first one of these will be. Excuse me?
Which meeting will that one be for?
Uh, that will be your first meeting in April. It's the employee forum. It's where we invite employees to come in and just address any issue with you all in an informal setting. And that would be here in the boardroom. And that's prior to the start of your April sixth regular board meeting.
We'll probably have to use the same format as we're using right now.
Probably, yeah, until.
Normally we went down and set the tables.
We'd.
Or just set chairs in a single, in a circle. And it was really non-formal, but, you know, this is always seems a little more formal when we have to sit up here.
Well, maybe we move our five chairs right down here.
Yeah, we could do so, or grab a chair, yeah, so.
We can work that.
So with that, could, could you all do a motion to approve those committees of the hall?
So moved.
Second.
Motion made in second, it, uh, approve the committees of the hall. Beth, you want to call the roll?
Commissioner Schlongen?
Aye.
Commissioner Johnson?
Aye.
Commissioner Pop?
Aye.
Commissioner Kapinski?
Aye.
Commissioner Heinon?
Aye.
Okay. Motion to go into closed session?
Oh, okay. Okay, perfect.
Motion's been made in second and go into closed session.
Thanks, Jacob. Have a good day.
Yep.
Enjoy your time out the door.
Commissioner Schlongen, uh, I'm going to need to send you a new link for this closed session. We don't want to use the regular county board, um, because there's too many folks out there that have that link and the caller number. I'm going to have to send you a brand new one. So let me go do that right now and please be checking your email and you'll get that link.
So Beth, you want to?
Beth, you want to call the roll for the closed session?
Yep.
If you want, just go ahead and start the record that way.
Yep.
I won't.
Yep.